Had the opportunity to review your submission, so I'll pass it to you to make an opening statement. Professor.
Thank you very much. Good morning. I'd also like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land. Where I'm joining, which is the Camarangle Plan of the Orbanation, and to pay my respects to elders past and present. I'd like to thank the committee for the opportunity to provide feedback to this inquiry into the use of primates and other animals in medical research in New South Wales. Quickly, something about myself. I was the founding director of the Westmead Institute of Medical Research, and stepped up in 2019, and have now directed the Centre for Virus Research there, and the theme leader for the Exeas and the Sydney Institute of Infectious Diseases of the University of Sydney. I was director of research in Western Sydney Local Health District for the first fourteen years of my tenure as director of the institute. Today, I'm speaking as chair, state chair of the Australian Academy of Health and Medical Sciences. And this is one of Australia's prominent academies with impartial voice of health and medical research in Australia, an independent interdisciplinary body of 151 fellows who are the nation's leading experts in health and medicine. We cover expertise from more than fifteen medical specialties, nursing, midwifery, allied health, and have some knowledge covering biomedical sciences, engineering, technology, social sciences, and humanities. My personal expertise is infectious diseases and specifically vaccines, and I can speak to examples from this field. One hundred and thirty-five of our four hundred and fifty-one fellows are based in New South Wales. The use of animals is crucial in many areas of health and medical research, with profound impacts on health in Australia and across the world. And the costs and benefits of using animals in research in New South Wales are broadly the same as those that apply across Australia and internationally. Many advances in human and animal health have occurred because of the use of animals in research. The development of COVID-19 vaccines and drugs provides an important recent example. Rapid development and rollout of drugs and vaccines would not have been possible without initial testing in animals to establish that they are safe and effective. The development of these vaccines is something that I've been involved in, and so I can speak further on this as an example if that would be helpful to you. So animals for such purposes must be judicious, and any of these animals must be humane. The academy supports and endorses the principles of the three Rs, to refine, reduce, and replace the use of animals in research. This principle is used in Australia and overseas to underpin the ethical, humane, and responsible care and use of animals for research purposes. The academy supports the continued development of non-animal alternative methodologies, and I myself have been involved in some of these. It should be noted that the current alternatives cannot fully replace animal research. The academy also supports transparent reporting of the use of animals in research. Using animals is subject to strict regulations, which is important for researchers and for the wider community. Search institutions, animal ethics committees, and individual researchers are bound to actively comply with the New South Wales Animal Research Act, the Animal Research Regulation 1985, the Animal Research Regulation 2021, and the Australian Code for the Care and Use of Animals for Scientific Purposes of NHMRC. Those are my introductory remarks to Chair, and I'm happy to provide some summary of the academy's mission if you should want.
Thank you, Professor. We will take you up on that offer. We have members on the committee from the opposition, the crossbench, and the government, so we'll be sharing our time between those groups to ask you some questions, not just related to what you've said in your opening statement, but also your submission. So we'll commence, and we'll divide the time approximately equally between the groups as best we possibly can. So we'll get the questioning underway, and we'll commence with the opposition. The honourable Walt Secord.
Thank you, Mr. Dunleavy. Mr. Dunleavy, can you hear me? Because I'm operating remotely.
We can, Walt, very clearly. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Dr. Cunningham, could you please assist in... You mentioned in your opening statement about COVID-19 and the use of animals. Can you explain what animals were used? And you mentioned safeguards. So if you could explore that, please, because that would be timely and interesting.
Yes, well, initially, as with most vaccines, small animals are used for both toxicity and initial testing, such as mice. What we found with COVID-19 is that these animals do not provide an adequate model of the disease of COVID-19. Neither do ferrets that have been used in influenza research. It was Syrian hamsters that provided the best models of animal research. They had to be imported into Australia, because we didn't have them here initially. And ultimately, also, all of the vaccines, as mandated by the Food and Drug Administration and Therapeutic Goods Administration, follows the FDA, according to their website, my discussions with them. And so eventually, non-human primates were also used and have been very useful because that's so close to humans in demonstrating the responses that we require. So safety initially, and toxicity in small animals. The modeling of human disease in Syrian hamsters and non-human primates, and ultimately getting as close to humans as we possibly can with non-human primates. That was so... And it's very important, Mr. Secord, because RNA vaccines were new. We hadn't had any used in humans previously.
So, Dr. Cunningham, so what would have happened if you were not able to test the COVID vaccines on animals? What would have happened? Would it have delayed? What would have been the practical result of that?
Well, certainly, this would mean, in essence, that we would have no knowledge of potential toxicities or of safety of these vaccines. It could have delayed COVID vaccines by years, because people would have been so cautious about using this completely new type of vaccine, RNA vaccines. Even the Asprazaga vaccine had only been... This type of vaccine had only been used once before for Ebola.
Now, you mentioned in your opening statement, you talked about safeguards. What were you referring to? And what do you mean by safeguards?
Well, it's by safeguards, I mean that animals need to be appropriately housed, looked after, and not only that, the research needs to be regulated at arm's length. And that's why we have animal ethics committees, which are constituted by veterinarians and researchers, and animal welfare people, and laypeople in equal numbers. And this is overseen by the Department of Primary Industries through its AARP, which is one of the program committees. So there has to be transparent reporting of research, and also, all researchers have to justify the number of animals that they use. And over the years, we see increasing stringency in my own research. We have been really quizzed on how we can reduce the number of animals while retaining the appropriate statistical significance in our research.
Dr. Cunningham, so how does New South Wales in Australia compare to other jurisdictions when it comes to safeguards on animal testing?
Very well, in terms of Victoria has similar processes, and many other jurisdictions also have such animal ethics committees. Animal ethics committees are right throughout Australia.
Now, Dr. Cunningham, I do not support the mistreatment of animals, but what would be the practical result on research preventative health vaccines if, in fact, this committee was to make recommendations tightening up regulations involving animal testing? What would be the practical result? Would it be negative, positive? And what would be the practical result on your area of research and your members?
So I think it depends what you mean by tightening up. The regulations over the years have become tighter, and it is incredibly important to balance between the need for statistical significance and minimum numbers of animals being used. Also, we need to look for methods of replacement. Personally, I'm trying to develop models from volunteers using discarded tissues to replace at least some animal research. But that has to be matched up with animal research to make sure, and human results, to make sure that we get the right results. If the regulations become too stringent, it will mean that New South Wales research will not be competitive with overseas research, and it probably means that less national research funding will flow into New South Wales. And this will affect undoubtedly the quality of medicine in our hospitals. There is one of the reasons why research institutes are established, as I did, on medical purposes, is to ensure that clinicians are well-trained in research and therefore apply the principles of research to their practice of medicine.
So, Dr. Cunningham, do you feel that at the moment, the balance is right in New South Wales?
Yes, I do. I think this is continuing, and I think that we will continue to find substitutes for animal research. But I'm appalled by the fact that there has been a reduction in the number of animals over the years, nationally and in New South Wales, used in research, and that indicates that we're making progress in looking for substantive processes. I think we can look to other countries for all the things that they do, such as having centers for PRRs, as occurs in the UK. And perhaps this should be explored as a way of enhancing the networking of the jurisdictions across Australia. We sometimes can have unevenness between the various jurisdictions across the country, and certainly I'm a great advocate for network as much as we can.
Now, if there was to be a recommendation to, I guess, curb or draw back animal testing, what are the alternatives to animal testing? Excuse me if that's a very dumb question, but if you weren't able to test on animals, what would you do? What would be the result of that?
Well, I think that we would have to rely on results from other jurisdictions and internationally. It means that we wouldn't be able to do things here. There is no substitute for, as I mentioned, if you don't have hamsters, you can't work on drugs for COVID. There's just no way you can do that. There's no other way of being able to predict the effect of drugs and vaccines on COVID without having those animal models. So that would have to be done elsewhere, not in New South Wales.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, that ends my...
Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Cunningham.
A little bit of time, so Professor, perhaps if I can ask some questions before our time has completed. Professor, in your submission, you talk about a matter with respect to non-human primate studies, and the need for the ongoing application of those studies to advance primary research and also specific pre-clinical trials, as I understand it. Those two dimensions. Can you please, just for the purposes of the committee, help explain matters to do with primary research or peer research versus that associated with pre-clinical trials?
Well, I think that all of us, and this has been an increasing trend, are trying to translate our research from discovery into clinical outcomes. That means diagnostics, drugs, and vaccines. Now, direct the National Centre for HIV and Hepatitis Research, we're doing exactly that. So there isn't preferentially, there is not a difference between the two. There's a continuum, a pipeline that goes through from discovery research on the bench, which you may do with cultured cells, which come from all over, right through to doing research in animals, which is the premonitor to going into humans. Now, what we're trying to do is to reduce the impact on primate research. Primate research is expensive, and also we prefer not to use primates if we can. So there have been advances in this area, for instance, using what are called humanized mice, putting human cells into particularly strains of mice that are immunocompromised. And in fact, we're just recently talking about the use of drugs for a condition called HDOV1, which affects people in central Australia. About forty-five percent of indigenous people there are infected with HDOV1, and there is no drug treatment. So my colleagues in Melbourne are trying to develop drugs with these humanized mouse models, and it may be possible to go directly into humans without going into primates. That's what I think might be the future, but we're not there yet. And it's really important to emphasize we're not there yet, and it's really important to emphasize that we would not have had COVID vaccines within a year if we had not had primate research.
Could you please elaborate on the matter of the use of computing and computer technology, in particular software, to model certain research that's being undertaken? I presume this is part of the continuum, Professor, you spoke about, that the application of computers, hardware, and software is utilized in research. Could you please provide some insights into how that fits in?
Well, I'll give you an example from our own research. At present, we're looking at all of these planes, the virus that caused COVID, around the world. And in fact, one amazing development has been the so-called GisAID database, in which scientists all around the world put their latest sequences, the genomic sequence of the COVID viruses. So we can see how the virus evolves, and this is a major problem for us at present, as you already know. We've already got two new strains circulating just recently in this community. And so in order to devise the best vaccines that might cover all of the COVID strains, we can use the computers to help us devise those vaccines. It does not help us in any way to actually test those vaccines out. It has to be done firstly in the test tube, and then it has to be done in... And could be done in humanized mouse models to start off with, but then you'll need to progress into non-human primates before going to humans.
So, Professor, is it your evidence that if research with respect to the work that you're doing and others are doing in the field, we're talking about medical science here, was not able to utilize animals? We're working from, without sort of making distinction, but sort of putting them on a continuum. If one talks about the mice at one end, through to the non-human primates at the other, and you have to identify some other animals. That if there wasn't an ability to utilize them in the medical research, that the medical research would not be able to advance, could not be undertaken in any other way?
True. You can't replace... It would be simply fantasyland to think that we could simulate all of the complexities of primates and humans by computer. It's just simply not possible. One day, maybe in fifty years, that might be possible. But certainly, I would say that that is a long, long way off. People are thinking about computer simulations. I never heard anybody realistically consider that in the scientific field. But what I mentioned is certainly being thought about. How can we replace primates with smaller animal models? In fact, only about point three percent of research worldwide is carried out... Animal research is carried out on primates.
Thank you, Professor. Pass over to Deputy Chair, Honorable Emma Hurst.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Professor Cunningham, for coming in today, or joining us here today, I should say. In your submission, you talk about the vast majority of animals being bred by Bio Resources Centre or the Animal Resources Centre. I'm wondering if these facilities are also the facilities supplying cats and dogs used for medical experimentation, if you're aware?
I'm not aware, but certainly on our campus, we phased out any research using cats and dogs.
Which facility is that, sorry?
Westmead.
Westmead. And how long ago did you phase out the use of cats and dogs?
I would need to take that on notice, but it's over a decade.
And what was the reason for the phase out of the use of cats and dogs at Westmead?
Companion animals, and we were able to use other substitutes.
Thank you. I want to talk to you quickly, just because you mentioned that your work is specifically in vaccines, and I've spoken to other vaccine researchers, and one concern that they had in regards to the legislation was a lack of flexibility in regards to the use of LD-50 testing. One researcher that I spoke to had concerns that if they did an LD-50 test and fifty-one of the animals died, that they would actually have to scrap everything and start over again with a new one hundred animals. Do you have the same concerns with the legislation not being flexible? And this was, sorry, this was a facility that was actually testing vats of vaccine that were about to go out to the public market to test that each vat was a safe vaccine to actually put out onto the market. Do you have the same concerns around the lack of flexibility for researchers around LD-50 testing?
That's not something I do, so you'd have to ask people who do that. What we do do is to ensure that when we do our experiments, we actually work out what is the power calculation for the minimum number of animals needed to provide a statistically significant result. If you don't do that, you're wasting the animals, which is incredibly important. So you need to have the minimal number, and then you need to operate off that minimal number. And I would imagine that LD-50 testing would be a bit similar, but you need to ask an expert who's doing that.
That's right, that's right. I just want to go back a little bit to breeding, and I think this kind of relates to your recent answer as well. Some of the submissions that we've received talk about onsite breeding and facilities that's taking place beyond sourcing animals from those centers. And the concern is that a large number of healthy animals are being killed because they're in excess of breeding stock. Have you heard of that occurring as well?
Certainly on our campus, that would be minimal. We try to ensure that we match any breeding, which is usually with rats and mice, to the requirements of the experiments.
And why are you doing onsite breeding if there's these two facilities open that are supplying animals?
Something because we actually need things readily available. We're looking at, for instance, viral infection of nerve cells, and we need to be able to get those immediately, and be able to... The reason we're doing this, we're trying to come up with new antivirals, for instance, for herpes, which underpins the acquisition of HIV around the world. So it's necessary to do that locally. They're minimal. We, at Westmead, and I was director at the time, we actually seeded the breeding of most of our animals back to the Moss Vale facility, particularly as the director there had been the director of animal research at Westmead at one stage. So it made more sense to do this. Now, breeding, of course, at any campus like Westmead is under the purview of the Animal Ethics Committee and is inspected as such.
And you did say that there would be minimal amount of overbreeding where healthy animals were overbred and killed. Would you be concerned to hear that at other facilities, that this could be an enormous number of animals, hundreds of animals potentially each year that are being killed? Would that concern you?
Yes, it would, and I'd suggest that needs to be checked and oversighted by the Animal Ethics Committee.
Thank you. You mentioned the three Rs in your submission, and specifically around replacement. My understanding that there's not a whole deal of funding towards alternatives to animals in research in Australia at the moment. In fact, one submission said there was no government funding to support and encourage replacement. Are you aware of any movement in this space? And, you know, does it make it difficult for researchers to actually do research in this space, to develop alternatives while there's no actual funding avenues available?
Well, we're doing this. We're taking lymph nodes and tissues, discarded surgical tissues.
Sorry, Professor Cunningham, sorry, just to direct you back there. So the question was about funding for alternatives that are coming from either the federal NHMRC or the state government. Are you aware of any funding? And do you think that that would be useful to help develop alternatives?
So I'm just about to address that, you didn't let me finish. So what we're doing is looking at lymph nodes from humans, from volunteers, and also discarded surgical tissues. That's funded by both NHMRC, that's the surgical tissues, and the lymph node models are actually funded by Global Pharma, who are very interested to work out how their vaccines work in humans.
So you feel that there is enough funding going into the development of alternatives currently? Or do you think that they need... Because obviously, a lot of our submissions are talking about the lack of funding in this space to actually encourage the development of alternatives. You've given us one example where Westmead may be working on it, but my question was really quite specific about what funding is available, and is it enough? And do we need more funding to help researchers find those alternatives?
There's not enough funding for research in Australia as a whole. The funding success has dropped from twenty-five percent to nine percent during my lifetime from NHMRC, and our younger researchers are struggling. All research is looked at competitively, and to alleviate funding specifically to an area which may not necessarily be competitive would be inappropriate. It's most appropriate that all research is done competitively. So there are certainly plenty of researchers around Australia I know that are looking at how one might actually use the sort of human models I mentioned, human tissue models, and winning competitive funds. But I emphasize that all funding for medical research in Australia and success rates have declined, and it would be important to ensure any research funding for this was of the highest quality, meaning that it has to compete against other research as well.
Thank you, Chair, and good morning to you, Professor Cunningham.
Thank you, Chair, and good morning to you, Professor Cunningham. If I could just, I guess, close out that discussion then on funding. You mentioned that you were undertaking some funding, sorry, you were undertaking some research into alternatives. Is that funding, sorry, is that research always funded externally? Or in your knowledge, do some of these institutions and other researchers sort of put their own funds into trying to find alternatives?
Well, I know where researchers get their own funds from. Just about all medical research in this country is funded externally. So it's NHMRC, ART, Medical Research Future Fund, philanthropic or commercial. And we have a mix of that in all of the research institutes and the universities.
And in terms of that commercial funding for research, what percentage of that would be into alternatives as opposed to, you know, I guess, other types of research that's using animals?
I don't have a figure on that. The, but obviously, there is an interest from Global Pharma in knowing how their vaccines and drugs work. So this may actually help in the future. This is one of the ways in which academia and Pharma do cooperate and collaborate. Very important, a very clear understanding the implications of commercial funding for research, of course.
And what is, what is the incentive, I guess, for those commercial, you know, for Big Pharma to invest in research into alternatives to animals?
To improve their vaccines. And if we're, I think one of the issues, just to use my own research as an example, clearly, we know how, for instance, the one I'm working on is the Schilder's vaccine and also COVID vaccines. If we know how they work in, say, mice, mice may not necessarily be the exact equivalent of humans. One of the reasons why non-human primate research is carried out is they're much closer to humans. So if we can develop models that actually use human discarded tissues, then obviously that provides a much greater understanding of how these vaccines might work in humans and how they might be improved, the side effects of them and their efficacy.
So from a, from a commercial perspective, though, the only reason that you would invest in alternatives to research that involves animals, whether it be non-human primates or other animals, is because ultimately you're going to get a cost benefit from that, isn't that, that would be correct? Would it be a more efficient process, or, you know, something along those lines?
Look, I couldn't completely generalise, but it would certainly make a lot of sense that commercial organisations would be looking for their own benefit in the future. There are some commercial organisations, however, who've already made a lot of money through COVID vaccines that are investing back into the scientific community because they recognise that much of the advances that have led to COVID vaccines have been produced in the public sector.
So if, if New South Wales was to tighten the regulations around the use of animals in medical research, would that then incentivise those kind of big corporations to fund alternatives to animal use? Or do you think they'd just go elsewhere?
They'd go elsewhere.
In terms of effectiveness of, you know, in your opening statement, you talk about the, you know, the primate research is vital for the COVID vaccine to be developed within one year. But there's a huge amount of experiments on animals that don't result in anything useful. How do we track the effectiveness of every particular bit of research? And I guess have an understanding of whether that use of animals was actually vital in that particular case?
I'm often asked that sort of question in relation to all types of research. And I think it's really important to understand that we don't know where the next advances are coming from. Medical research is like an upside-down triangle. And that means that many inputs are required to actually step forward, to get, as someone once said, an extra sentence even in the textbooks. So you don't know where the next big breakthrough is going to come from. It might be Cara Mullis riding his motorcycle in California, coming up with a brilliant idea that came up with the PCR test that's been used so widely for COVID testing. These, the only thing you can do, and that is what we do, and that is look for the highest possible research in terms of excellence. And that means peer review and to ensure that occurs. Unfortunately, at the stage, as I mentioned, cutoff is too high in Australia. If you take that triangle, we are moving too close to the tip of the triangle at present, and we may be missing alternatives that may lead to the sort of advances that Peter Doherty made in discovering the fundamentals for organ transplantation, for instance.
Can I ask, though, if there's no requirement to publish the results of experiments on animals, or, sorry, research that's used animals? If there's no requirement to publish it when that research hasn't actually turned up anything positive, what's to stop that same research then being repeated with another set of animals in the future?
Yeah, I think that's a very good question and something that regulatory bodies and scientists try to load the world. One of the reasons why clinicaltrials.gov was set up to establish, to ensure that all trials were registered and negative results were registered as well. The researchers like me often find ways to publish data that includes negative results as well. So you can publish the negative results side by side with the positive results. But I agree with you, it's very difficult to get journals to accept pure negative studies.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Professor, and thank you for making yourself available for today's hearing. My colleagues have asked, actually, a lot of good questions, a lot of questions I was going to ask myself. Perhaps we'll go to, you mentioned in your submission, in the strange early stage of COVID-19, you touched on this earlier on, during the pandemic, some research groups had to send their vaccine candidates overseas to animal testing. There was no progress, small animals, all non-human primates were available in Australia. Can you tell us why there wasn't available at that point?
Firstly, the Syrian hamsters were not available in Australia, just simply because they hadn't been used previously. It's got to do with breath. Secondly, the primate research facility was actually closed down in Melbourne and taken in another direction, which a number of us thought was retrogressive and were still trying to work on react play.
Okay, so you mentioned earlier that even the use of non, of no animals in research may be another 50 years away.
I was commenting on the possibility that computer simulations might substitute for animal research. And what I was trying to say is the complexity of humans and primates as such. And I'm certainly not going to commit myself to just 50, but that's a long, long way off. That's what I was trying to say.
Okay, so if we go earlier, one of my colleagues mentioned about funding. And we know that there's never enough funding for any, any research and development. But even if you had unlimited funding, obviously, it's still important at this point in history to still have animals in research, that's my understanding. Would that be a fair assumption?
Absolutely. The comment I was making about funding is that Australia's research funding has dropped below those of our international competitors in Europe and the USA. And I think it's up to all of us. And certainly, when I was the President of the Association of Australian Medical Research Institutes, we pushed hard for the MRFF, but our young scientists are having a lot of trouble when only one in 10 of their hard, their very extensive research applications succeed. That was my point. But that's apart from the fact that animal research, we have not nearly reached the point where we can eliminate all animals for research. We're trying to do that, and I mentioned my own efforts. And we, in the meantime, we need to stick to those principles of the three Rs.
So if, so if they were to, let's say, ban animals in research here in Australia, in New South Wales, then we would risk losing the, can I say, the intelligentsia of the medical industry or the medical research industry to overseas?
Definitely. The, we have a lot of people going overseas every year. I have a number of PhD students who are very bright overseas. We want to attract those brains back. Particularly important, as you can see with New South Wales establishing an RNA manufacturing facility, a gene vector facility in New South Wales, that we get the best in writers back into New South Wales because the excellence of our research supports this advanced manufacturing in the future.
And your information here is also shared, obviously, with colleagues over the series as well. And that's how you actually share information when you're doing research?
Absolutely. I used to travel overseas five times a year to go to conferences, often invited and paid for. And that exchange of ideas comes back to Australia and fuels our research, keeping us at the advancing edge so we can compete.
Thank you, Professor. But just one last question before I pass on my colleagues. You touched on briefly about xenotransplantation. Can you just tell us a little bit more about it?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, just clarify the question?
So you mentioned in your submission about, I believe, I think it's pronounced xenotransplantation?
Yes, that's, I'm not an expert in xenotransplantation. But my colleague at Westmead, Professor Wayne Hawthorne, is now the President of the Xenotransplant, International Xenotransplantations Society, which is a real feather in Australia's cap. We have very advanced transplantation capacity in the state. Liver, lung, lately moving from the whole pancreas into just the pinhead eyelids to try and cure diabetes, cure diabetes, which is what they've managed to do. Now, the problem we have is this inadequate numbers of donors, human donors in Australia and around the world, to satisfy the demand. And so there's been a lot of emphasis on using animals such as pigs, which have surprisingly quite similar immune systems and size of organs to us, and then engineering the pigs to, so that when we transplant the organs into humans, they're not rejected. And the first of these art transplantations was done recently in the, in the USA. So there's quite a lot of very ethical and careful experimentation on a particular strain of pigs at Westmead at present to look at how this might occur in the future and to try and catch the fallout from not having enough human donors in Australia.
We've followed up on the investments over many, many years. I've just written about the pig one over in the US, I think it was a few months back. They brought, they brought us information about it. I'll just pass it on to my colleague, Chris Baffert.
Thank you.
I think that, I can just comment, that just shows how many, many years of research, both at Westmead and overseas, eventually finds a way into the human context.
Yeah, it took many, many years, dedicated research. Thank you, Professor.
Thank you, Professor Cunningham, for your evidence so far. I wanted to ask a bit more about the difference in ethical considerations or ethical, the ethical threshold, which I assume is higher for using a primate for medical testing, medical research, compared to other animals? What sort of difference exists in the regulatory regime or restrictions between using a primate compared to using, like, a mouse, for instance?
Well, I think Ms. Hurst has actually visited Westmead to look at our primate facilities, though she would also be aware of how this occurs with the baboons. So in essence, obviously, I don't know all of the details. You'll have to talk to Professor Hawthorne about this. But some of the, having looked at the facilities, you're absolutely right. They need to be housed in an environment that's stimulating. In our place, it's TV sets, would you believe? So that, and they need to have enough room. And if you're dealing with large animals like sheep and pigs, they also need room to roam, and that's important, give them paddocks and things like that. But for the details, I suggest you talk to people who are actually directly doing some of that primate research. But you're right, the requirements are greater, and they're looked at very carefully by the Animal Research Review Panel with the Department of Primary Industries and our Animal Ethics Committee as well.
Is the, are there considerations given for how consequential the research is? For instance, research on, on medicine or drugs to, you know, chemotherapy, for instance, against cancer, at one extreme end, compared to drugs that might be for, like, hair growth, for instance, or something that's quite minor at the other end? Because I think that most people, if you said to them that, that, you know, animals are being used for medical research that's potentially groundbreaking cancer research, most people would probably say that's fair. But at the lower end, which is bordering on beauty and cosmetics, most people would say that's probably, probably not fair.
Absolutely correct. And that's what's led to some of the concern about using cosmetics on rabidors, you would probably know. But that is part of the brief of the Animal Ethics Committee, to understand the consequences of the research. Is this, is this highly valuable research? And is it, is it well done? Is it, is it excellent? Is it the sort of research that would justify using animals of any type? It's part of the brief of the Animal Ethics Committee, and they make those judgements. And they quiz the researchers very carefully about how the research is going to be used and the future significance. So yes, of course.
And you think, and you think they're doing a good job overall in?
Yeah, I've experienced this as, in the stringency with which we've been quizzed over the past, you know, 20 years of my career, I can see just how carefully the Animal Ethics Committee is now questioning us, which is not surprising because they've got lay and animal care and veterinary representatives on those committees.
I'll hand over to my colleague. Thank you.
Thank you, Professor, for appearing today and providing some insight into the invaluable world of medical research and the use of primates and other animals in that. I wanted to touch on one of the topics that Miss Boyd raised about cost-benefit analysis. And where in the cost-benefit analysis do you see the advantage to human life over animal life being factored in? As in, where a animal can be used in a testing facility in order to develop, say, a vaccine that's going to improve human life? Is that, is that factored in into that cost-benefit analysis? Because I guess I worry that there's a... Because I guess I, I worry that there's a view that it's not, the human life isn't higher than, say, primate or animal life on, on the relative scale, and that the research is not as important. Could you just expand on that sort of philosophical debate?
Well, I think there's a couple of things. One is that I have read, and I'm not an expert in this field, about the value of human life, and I think it's very difficult to put a monetary value on it, and I would submit that it will vary greatly around the world and in various communities. I certainly know how expensive primates are, but I don't know the value of a primate life. I think the public has to be taken into account here, what does the public think of the price of human lives? Would we have been prepared for the COVID epidemic to have gone on for an extra two years, with all of the deaths involved, a million in the USA, without the development of vaccines? So it's a very clear example of whether there is a great benefit in, in animal research. And this is not an exact science, as far as I would understand, but I don't judge these things in economics, I judge them in terms of the significance of the problems we're trying to solve. As I said in my submission, eight hundred thousand people infected with hepatitis P, thirty seven million infected with HIV, and only sixty percent of those people on antiretrovirals. There are, it's very clear as medical research of what our aim should be and what the significance of a successful outcome should be. And I think it has to be taken in those sense. I don't think you can do this all on money.
And so that was basically the point that I was trying to lead to, is cost benefit analysis sometimes in relation to research to save human life is irrelevant. Is that correct?
I don't think I said that.
No, 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 I'm sorry, I appreciate that, but would that be a fair assumption?
No, I, I think, I think it's not possible to make exact comparisons the way that you're asking for, which is an economic analysis. Now, of course, health economics comes into everything, and when the Australian government is considering which vaccines they'll put on the free list, then they actually ask all the time for a health economic analysis, and that, that can be done, that can be done because the cost of vaccines is known and the cost of certain diseases is known, and then they can be prioritized. And in fact, that's how vaccines are actually brought into Australia and put on the free list. But trying to do that comparison for human life versus animal life, I've never seen such an analysis, and be interested if you have such references.
I don't, and I think that was sort of the point I was trying to, to achieve. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks. And Professor, that brings us to the conclusion of the session. It's just gone, passed. So, behalf of the committee, thank you very much. There, I think it was one question you took on notice, and I expect there could be one of course supplementary questions arising from members reading hands side following the hearing, and what usually happens in that case is that the secretary will liaise with you over the provision of those respective questions and organize for your consideration and return within the next twenty one days. So if you'd be agreeable with that, that would be appreciated.
I think that was when we're cats and dogs phased out of research at Westmead, which I should be able to find out fairly easily.
Yes, and we'll extract the precise question offhand side. So on behalf of the committee, Professor, thank you very much for your time this morning. Thank you.
Thanks for the committee.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
I'm sorry we're so far away. The microphone is perhaps in the way, so if you want to pull it forward and perhaps drop down a little bit, might improve the visibility of the committee. So when you get settled, we can get things underway.
Okay, oils.
Great, well, thank you very much. Well, we welcome now our next witness is Rachel Smith, who is the Chief Executive Officer of Humane Research Australia Organisation. So thank you very much for making yourself available today to the inquiry. What I'll do first is get through the formality of asking you to please, I know I've just done it, but for yourself, to state your name, your position title, and swear either an oath or affirmation, whichever you prefer, the words of which are before you.
Yep, I'm Rachel Smith, the Chief Executive Officer of Humane Research Australia Inc., also known as HRA, and I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given to me should be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. Could I now invite you to make an opening statement? Before, to say the, can I just acknowledge and thank you and the organisation for your submission? It's been received, processed and stands as submission number two hundred and four to the inquiry. It's very detailed, and I'm sure it'll be the basis of a number of questions in addition to what you cover in your opening statement, so please proceed.
Thank you. So thank you for the opportunity to give evidence today and for your time and attention. Humane Research Australia, HRA, has submitted a comprehensive submission, and I am happy to respond to any questions on this or in response to the submissions of other parties. Before doing so, I would like to reiterate the resistance that can be expected when the status quo is questioned. A culture of animal use is prevalent within academia, industry and regulatory agencies. This is despite animal models never having been scientifically validated, but simply accepted by default. It is of personal curiosity to me why this culture prevails. After all, we are talking about qualified, intelligent research professionals, inspired by the desire to help those suffering from life threatening diseases. Why would they be prolonging the use of models of poorly performing animal models? A 2020 paper titled, Our Research Is Moving Away From Animal Models As A Result Of Poor Clinical Translation In The Field Of Stroke, provides some insight. The publication is based on an analysis of eighty opinion papers. Most authors were from academic departments of neurology, neuroscience or stroke research. The majority sought to address the translation crisis by efforts to improve the reliability of animal models. Only three papers proposed solutions that addressed the challenge presented by animal to human species differences, whereas most efforts were placed in trying to make animal models work despite the history of its failing. The paper discusses a theory that when confronted with anomalies within a paradigm, scientists tend not to renounce that paradigm but attempt to modify their theory instead. Beliefs and practices continue in the face of contradictory evidence perpetuated by entrenched practices, institutional locking and supportive frameworks for animal research. These include a bias towards animal research by grant funders, peer reviewers and journal editors, the wish to avoid sunk costs invested in animal research infrastructure, and the economic drivers of those gaining from animal research, such as supplies of animals or equipment. Just as maintaining current scientific practices despite their inherent limitations is advocated by many, so is maintaining the current regulatory system, which is claimed to be world leading and robust. Without public access to necessary documentation, it is difficult to disprove this claim. However, the research papers that HRA identify and the anonymous information we receive, which I can elaborate on, suggests the system of self regulation is far from robust and that the cost benefit analysis overestimates the likely benefits while underestimating the costs. HRA concedes that animal research has generated scientific knowledge. However, with the advancement of new approach methodologies, NAMS, and in the, and the inherent inability of animal models to accurately mimic human biology, we welcome this inquiry as a first step towards critical evaluation of animal research in New South Wales. While some may portray this debate as scientists versus activists, there is increasing recognition of the limitations of animal models in scientific literature and by innovative companies embracing new approaches. Many of the advocacy groups advocating for humane and scientifically valid research are staffed by scientists, many of whom previously used animals before coming to a realisation that they are unheeding progress. Similarly, HRA has researcher representation on our staff and advisory committee. If science is about questioning ways of doing things to, to ensure we are best equipped to answer the questions that remain unanswered, then resistance to embracing a new paradigm must be overcome. For this change to happen, it must be incentivised, for example via redirection of funding or training in new methods, and there must be increased accountability to measure the progress along the way. I note this recommendation is shared by many of the other submissions regardless of their position on the use of animals. HRA sincerely hopes this inquiry will lead to such changes in the interests of human and animal wellbeing.
Well, thank you very much. It's a very poignant and clear and comprehensive opening statement, and I thought it will lead to a number of questions from committee members. So we'll start, we have the committee represented from, from government opposition and crossbench, and if you're agreeable, we'll rotate between the various groupings and questions will follow. So you okay?
Yes, yeah, of course.
Commence with the deputy chair, Wayne Hurst.
Wonderful, thank you. And thank you, Ms Smith, for coming in today and for all the work that you do. We've received a submission as part of this inquiry from an animal care staff member that actually worked in a research facility, saying that she's witnessed several welfare issues in the facilities that she's worked at, including the killing of excess bred animals, cutting off the toes and tails of animals, killing off animals that aren't providing the right data that the researcher wants, incorrect use of analgesia. Does this surprise you to hear that this is potentially going on?
It doesn't surprise me to hear that it's going on. I was quite surprised to see a public submission because we receive very similar reports, but they're usually anonymous or the people that provide that report are very cautious of the information we provided because they fear for their jobs or sometimes actually physical fear of their supervisors or co-workers. And we, so I was very pleased to read that because I think it's very brave of that individual to come forward, and I, I look forward to hearing what they have to say, but it really echoes some of the information we get, which range from members of the public that served on animal ethics committees and were, felt they were completely intimidated if they made a complaint about an animal research facility, they weren't no longer taken to view the actual facility or, and similar to the person that made the submission to speak this afternoon. We've also heard about cases where animals were used and the data was not providing the results that the scientists wished to see, so they simply instructed the animal care staff to euthanise those animals and restart the experiment to try and obtain the data they wish, which is obviously unethical and also creating invalid results. We've heard anonymous complaints about research being conducted without Animal Ethics Committee approval, and probably the prominent one is, I guess, harassment and bullying and fear of speaking out because of other members on the Animal Ethics Committee or in the research institution. So it's not, not a surprise to me, but just a surprise that that person had the, I guess, strength to speak out.
Is there whistleblower protections in the Act that you're aware of? We've got ADO coming later, if that's not something you're aware of, but I'm just wondering if that's another reason people aren't coming forward?
I'm not hundred percent sure about the whistleblower protection, but I, when we speak to anonymous providers of that information, they are fearful that they have signed confidentiality agreements as being part of the AEC, or that if they were to share photos or footage, then that could be linked to them. So I assume that there is some obligation on them to, at least while they're in the current committee member, that they can't share that information or that they can't share footage or photos that they've obtained in the, in the process of serving on that committee, but I'm not a hundred percent sure about how the legislation provides that.
I can ask another panel member that's coming later today. You mentioned that, that sometimes there's research conducted on animals without Animal Ethics Committee approval. There was actually a case exposed recently in New South Wales where the animals were used in research without AEC approval, death as an endpoint. I mean, how is this happening? I mean, you know, is, is it because there's a lack of transparency, a lack of oversight? How, how do we end up with a system where people are conducting experiment on animals with death as an endpoint without any ethics approval?
I think in that particular case, there was a couple of factors that could be attributed. And when there's multiple ethics committees being involved or multiple institutions or researchers being involved, sometimes there, there is an assumption that someone else has gone through that process. And in that particular institute case, which involved a leading research institution, an anonymous source provided to me that that institution had known about that illegal research taking place for years before it was reported, and when an individual made a complaint about that, a prominent person at that university just told them, sorry, get a life, not doing, carrying on doing this. So I think that shows in a hierarchical system like a university, sometimes the, the issues that are prevalent, unfortunately.
Ms Hurst, could I just ask some clarification?
When's your turn, I think, because otherwise I've lost my time. The lack of transparency is a huge frustration for you at HRA. Can you tell us some of the information that you would like to have available that you simply can't access as a member of the public?
Oh, yeah, there's, there's a lot, great deal of information that we'd like to access, so I'll try and think of a shortlist. The most important thing, I think, would be a list of licence holders in New South Wales, because that information has been denied to us. It tends to be denied on grounds of public safety reasons. I don't necessarily think that's a, an adequate excuse. Also, we would like to see documentation on the funding that's been made available for animal research, non-animal research and development of alternative methods. We'd like to see plain language summaries and abstracts of the research that's been conducted, retrospective assessments of that research. We'd like the inspectorate reports to be made public, animal ethics committee deliberations to be made public, clear on the number of adverse incidents that have been reported and what the response was. We'd like to be able to do an inspection of the Walesha baboon facility. They're probably the, the top things that come to mind really just related to being able to assess whether that cost benefit analysis is being conducted accurately or not.
I might just go back very quickly to, to the anonymous information that you received about, it's been discussed at budget estimates, and so I think that the name of the university has already been released by the DPR, and I know that the DPR was involved in that research as well. Is there anything else that you want to use this opportunity to put on the record about that particular incident that may have come across to, to Humane Research Australia?
Yes, actually, when we've been trying to investigate further about what penalties were put forward as a result of that, the information that we've seen released, I guess on behalf of the minister, is that they don't, don't deem that operating without Animal Ethics Committee approval to be an offence under the Animal Research Act. I see it listed as an offence clearly on the Animal Research Act, so I'm quite surprised to see that the minister's office is communicating that information.
So do you have that in writing?
Yes.
Are, are you able to provide that to the committee?
I can do, yes, yeah.
Thank you, that'd be useful. And just quickly, two of your focus campaigns around forced swim tests and smoking mice models, that's, that's a big focus of yours. What's wrong with these experiments and what would you like to see this committee make as a recommendation regards to those experiments?
Like, we have had a focus on these because they are particularly invasive types of research, and in, in relation to the forced swim test, there is growing evidence that it's not actually an accurate screening tool for antidepressants, and many pharmaceuticals are no longer using that because of that lack of validity. Some institutions are no longer using that, there's the University of Adelaide and the University of South Australia recently announced that they're no longer using it. So I think there's a growing consensus that we no longer, I don't think we should ever be using it in the first place, but a growing consensus that this is not valid research and unnecessary as well as particularly cruel. And the inhalation research, I think exposing mice to smoke to try and induce conditions and then extrapolate findings from those mice, that is not necessarily going to be relevant to humans, is also very questionable and it involves prolonged exposure, mice on five times a week, nose only exposure to, in a tube, to smoke when they can suffer a whole range of adverse reactions to that from death, from suffocation trying to escape the tube. And again, we have released a report which documents a number of non-animal methods that could be used to conduct that research. that could be used to conduct that research. It's not a regulator requirement to use animals in that basic research and it's very disappointing to see the University of Newcastle continue to use this method and students to continue to be using that method there when members of their own animal ethics committee, for many years, we have information that have been objecting to that, but it's still continuing.
Thank you very much, and good morning and thank you for your submission. I think there's a temptation by some to reduce the terms of this inquiry to being about whether or not we ban the use of animals in medical research, which of course is not what the terms of this inquiry are about at all, but rather about the sort of overuse and misuse of animals in research. Can you talk about sort of what, I guess, kind of how much of the research that uses animals turns out to be actually useful or necessary?
Well, in terms of drug discovery, there is a, it's different number cited, but it's approximately 90% failure rate after having used animals in pre-clinical trials. I think that's pretty high failure rate. It's a bit harder to assess the kind of basic research which is conducted at universities to understand mechanisms which may then lead to something else, but I did detail that a little bit in the submission about evaluating, for example, 20 years later, how much of those breakthroughs that are reported in basic research, have they actually materialised to clinical use? And unfortunately, that's also a very low translation rate. So I think it definitely merits an evaluation of, could we be doing things different? Could we be investing funds in more reliable methods? Do we need to be relying on methods that we've used for decades, never been scientifically validated but accepted by default? So I think there's definitely a need for that stringent evaluation. And as I said, because of the lack of transparency, we don't receive the grant evaluation reports and that kind of nature of documents, and we'd really like to see those retrospective assessments in order to make that evaluation.
And would it reduce the, I guess, the excess number of animals that are used in research if we were to require some form of publication or transparency over the failed experiments using animals?
Yes, I think it would, and I think if there was that increased transparency and the knowledge that that information would be widely available, then perhaps it would be a deterrent to the type of research or excessive use. Sometimes we see PhD publications using thousands of mice, for example. Perhaps that would raise more questions at the Animal Ethics Committees, knowing that information is going to be public and also, I think, making that information accessible so other researchers can see what animals were used, what the outcomes were, and perhaps not leading to replication of any research if that information is publicly available in the scientific sector as well.
Thank you. When we look at the sort of lack of funding, I guess, for alternatives to using animals in research, I was asking the last witness about this as well, and it, I guess it appears that it's very unlikely that you will have a corporate funder, so a big pharma type player funding alternatives to animal research. So we're really quite reliant on the government to do that, aren't we?
I would say so. I mean, there is, instance, the Wellcome Trust, which is a pharmaceutical company, they have some specific grant rounds which are focused on new technologies, but it wouldn't be the majority of their funding, but they have started to do that and there is some institutions that are introducing those, but we really need to see a government push for there to be sustained funding, particularly because government is the main source of the research funding in New South Wales. So I think it's the responsibility of the New South Wales Government to redirect some of that funding into non-animal methods, otherwise we won't see that necessarily, that change in culture or the validation of new methods that are needed to inspire confidence in using those. So, and I think internationally, we are seeing that the government is contributing or co-contributing at least to the development of non-animal funds or alternative centres or centres of excellence. So there definitely needs to be a government incentive, particularly in New South Wales, I would say, as one of the leading states in terms of the number of animals used.
And in terms of, I guess, the, if you look back over the last 30 years, the decreased investment from government in medical research and the sort of increasing role that Big Pharma plays, do you think that that perhaps explains some of this inertia when it comes to changing the way that medical researchers do things?
I think in some degrees, there may be some pharmaceutical companies where the regulations are such that it's easier for them to get results through using animals or they can, they don't have to verify how they, the non-animal methods, or they can try and different species till it fits the results that they want. But there's other examples where pharmaceuticals are also pushing back. So there's been a case in the US where a pharmaceutical company is suing the FDA because they don't want the drug that they have to try to be approved, to have had to have been tested on dogs, so they are pushing against that. And there is other pharmaceutical companies pushing for changes in the US with the FDA Act. So, and the statistics of the number of animals that pharmaceutical uses is also reducing. So I think there probably is a shift in the pharmaceutical company, maybe the regulator is a little bit behind them.
And in terms of, I guess, the transparency for the individual who is then using the results of the medical research, is there, for example, if I was to try and choose between two different types of medication, is there any way that I could find out which of those had sort of used a more humane method, which of them might have used an alternative to animals being used or used less, you know, fewer animals, I guess? Is there any transparency for consumers?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, for a therapeutic to be approved, it would have had to, at this point, have used animals. So that would be hard to distinguish between the two in terms of the degree of suffering or the number of animals or the species, that information. I mean, you probably could look back at some of their applications for approval and see the documentation that they submitted, but I don't think the average person would take the steps or know how to go about that, and some of it would be confidential anyway. So there isn't really a scheme like you would see with cosmetics or other products at this stage.
And do you think that if there was that level of transparency, that might then encourage, for reputational reasons and for commercial reasons, the funding companies to actually sort of do a bit better when it comes to using alternatives to animals?
Possibly, but I think really that kind of scheme really only has value when the alternative methods, if there is a change to the legislation where you can have methods that are not using animals to compare against, and it may present a biased view, in fact, because you would see the medications that have been approved, but you wouldn't see all the failures, you would just see that, those products that have reached the end line, which is actually the vast minority. So I don't really have a strong opinion either way, but I think it's probably not something necessary at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Opposition or government?
Opposition's fine. Sorry, I've just rejigged it by one, so.
That's fine.
Well, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr Donnelly, thank you, Mr Ben. Ms Smith, on your website, and it actually says on your website that you oppose animal testing. How do you, what's the relationship between your title, Humane Research Australia, and claims on your website, that you actually oppose animal testing? Do you oppose animal testing in all forms?
We do, we oppose animal testing, the humane is referring to humane research methods which are not using animals, so different technologies, yeah.
So you oppose all animal testing, well, then what do you say to Professor Tony Cunningham, who was on, who said if we didn't have ethical animal testing, that the vaccine that we currently have, and I can tell you this morning, I've just been diagnosed with COVID-19, and I think the fact that I've been triple vaxxed means that in fact I'm not suffering the ravages that people in developing countries are. So what do you say to the fact that if we didn't have animal testing on hamsters, ferrets and mice, that we would be two years away from a COVID vaccine, millions of people would have died?
Yes, I did hear him make that statement.
Well, what is your response to that?
So my response is, well, really, it's a hypothetical situation because at the moment, if you don't finish, excuse me.
Point of order.
As to whether we could have achieved that result without using animals, because at the moment we have to use animals. But I think he has overlooked the fact that it wasn't just animals that got to the vaccine, it was also cell cultures, computer modelling, it was also non-animal methods that were used to assess batch quality of vaccines. It was also non-animal methods, for example, that were used to assess using organoids the impact on the brain. It was.
What? Sorry, I don't understand, what are you referring to?
I'm just referring to the fact that it wasn't simply animals that got us to the vaccine, there was non-animal methods which also contributed, and not just to the development of the vaccine, but to the batch testing of the vaccine, to looking at the impact of COVID on the brain using organoids, for example. So I think it's quite simplistic to say it's totally animals that got us to this point, and we can't say whether we could have achieved that result without animals because at this point it's legally required to use animals. So it's difficult to say whether we could have come to that point sooner or later or because we're not at that point legally.
You didn't answer my question. What is your response to Professor Tony Cunningham saying that we would be two years away from a COVID vaccination if we did not have animal testing on mice, hamsters and ferrets?
Well, my response is that that is inaccurate because we don't know the situation if we hadn't used animals, whether, if we could have come to the same result using non-animal methods, that would be my response.
What is your medical background? It says that you're Ms Rachel Smith, what medical training, research training or scientific training do you have?
I hold a masters in animal, animal science.
Animal science. Is it in the area of animal research or what is the area that you have in animal science?
In animal welfare, science and ethics and law.
Okay, so what is the area that you have in? Could you be a bit more specific?
It's a masters and the title is Masters in Animal Welfare, Ethics and Law.
Oh, so where did you do your masters dissertation?
I did it in Freedom of Information, Legislation and Animal Research.
Okay, so freedom of information, research, right. Can we go back to, so you referred earlier to alternatives. So what are the alternative, what would be the alternative to testing on mice, ferrets and hamsters for COVID vaccine, COVID-19 vaccinations? What would be the alternatives that scientific researchers create?
Well, there's a range of different methods from using human cells, from using, it's quite complex for me to explain all the different methods, but using 3D modelling, using computer modelling, using human data, using, there's different methods that can be used, you know, in vitro vaccination developments. So I've referred to several reports in my submission and I'm happy to provide further detail. It's difficult to explain all the different methods, but probably a combination of those different methods, what we would be advocating for.
I think it's quite clear from your, from your website and from your organisation that you prefer to have testing on human beings rather than hamsters, mice and ferrets. Is that correct?
No, that's not, not correct. We're advocating for human relevant biology, but it doesn't mean we're advocating for testing on humans or unwilling humans. It just means using human relevant data, so using human cells and then, using human cells and then creating 3D models or organoids from human relevant material.
Now, you gave evidence earlier, you talked about researchers cutting off the toes of animals and things like that. What is that, what is that referring to?
A point of order, that was my evidence, not the witness's evidence.
Oh, that was yours? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So can we go back to, so ultimately, I think I've got the general thrust of your, of your, of your evidence. So when you say there's a 90% failure rate, now, what were you referring to? I took it from my notes, you said there was a 90% failure rate in research, what were you referring to?
So in terms of drugs that have been tested in pre-clinical testing involving animals and then, then not passing through clinical trials to be approved, it's approximately 90%.
Right, but that's the accepted figure over as long as medicines have been around, that you do have to test to get to a success rate, that in fact a 90% failure rate would actually mean a 10% success rate, that in fact you have to go through rigorous testing regimes to get to a 10% success rate. Is that correct?
Currently, yes, but I think if there is ways that we can expedite that or just because something's always been quite a high failure rate, I don't think that's a justification to continue that trend.
I have sympathy for sentient creatures, but I just think that if you force me to make a decision amongst millions of people having COVID and having no, two years away from a vaccine, I think that on balance, how do you feel about that?
As I said, it's hard to make an assessment without knowing if we could have achieved that same result without animals. I have the vaccine and I'm supportive of the vaccine. Unfortunately, I didn't have a choice in selecting a vaccine that used animals or not, but I, I think that we need to be investing more in non-animal methods so that we can respond quickly. When we're talking about COVID and a vaccine, a lot of the time spent afterwards was trying to establish which animals then could contract COVID, trying to genetically modify animals that, so that they can be receptive to COVID, so that we can then test on them. Whereas if we can spend time and money investing in non-animal methods which can be validated, then we can have them prepared if we do have another epidemic, rather than panicking, thinking what animal can we test it in, what animal can we try and recreate the symptoms in. So I think it's sometimes a bit more complex than we might first think from a motive level.
Thank you, Mr Chair, that answers my questions, thank you.
Thank you. Just a few minutes left, so, sorry about the confusion, I rotated, started with opposition, crossbench, government, so I moved it around one grouping, so didn't mean to create confusion. In regards to your answers to some of the questions that were provided earlier, you spoke about the matter of, not related to human biology, I'm looking specifically in your submission, page number two, down the bottom of the page, and also on page number three. Perhaps page number three, probably clearer sentence, second paragraph says, however, HRA proposes that the benefits are overstated, and I presume talking about animal research here, that the superior methods based on human biology are much needed to progress human health in the modern era. Could you just explain what you mean by that?
Sorry, I'm just trying to find the.
Oh, sorry, top of page three, yeah, second, yeah.
Oh, yes, yeah.
First full paragraph, HRA is not, yeah. So you're not just getting the knowledge that's been secured from the animal research.
Yeah, I think it's just trying to counteract the narrative that animal research has led to so many cures, but we, if we're looking at that in isolation and not considering the times where it's also led to failures or adverse reactions or hasn't resorted in the cures, or perhaps there's been a case where medication has been toxic in animals and then hasn't progressed. So I think it's just a case of looking at a larger picture than picking selective cases of where animal research has made a benefit and because of, I guess, the severity of diseases, it's often, I think that's in people's mind, something is life threatening, we have to do anything and everything to try and find a cure for that, but it's really looking at, what is the best way to actually do that? And that's what I think I'm really referring to in terms of overstating the ethical assessments, so really looking sometimes, I think, at the severity of the disease and then justifying the research because of the severity of the disease rather than the likelihood of that method really making a tangible difference.
Can I ask you, that's the claim you make on the bottom page two, you say, the second last line, the severity of a disease does not justify the use of animals. Well, can I ask you then, if that's not the case, what is the justification for using animals? What criteria needs to be met to justify the use of animals?
So I think in terms of the severity, if the research was put forward and there was a clear justification, that was the only method that could be used and there's been evidence of results in that in previous cases and that no other method could be used and there would be more justification of it, rather than we'll keep doing the implanting a tumour on mice and seeing if that will cure cancer when we've cured it in the mice several hundreds of times probably. So.
Well, if we take the COVID example, which is raised earlier, would you believe that that's into the category of severe or severity which would agitate the use of animal research to in fact confront and deal with something which has essentially come out of nowhere or in fact emerged very quickly? And a need to respond? Uh, and a need to respond rapidly to deal with it.
Yeah, I think I've, the way I've phrased it may have maybe confusing, because it's not a case of saying that um the severity of a disease doesn't merit a massive response in terms of research, it's just that I don't want the severity of the disease to automatically lead to the assumption that animals are the way to create a cure for that disease, and then not to be thorough scrutiny on the methods used.
Well, if you take COVID, for example, just following that. If if the animal testing, and I understand you're saying, well, you can't compare it because animal testing is only placed. But that's a circular argument.
Yeah, yeah.
It just goes around in circles. Confronted, the world confronted with the COVID nineteen virus. Um, are you arguing that animal testing should not have been deployed in its various ways to to deal with what was confronted?
Probably at the level of in of um sophistication and development we have in non-animal methods, it probably would have been too early a stage to have done that, but I don't think that means that we shouldn't be.
Sorry, what what do you mean by that?
Probably because there hasn't been as much investment or development in animal methods. It may have been hard to have achieved the result in the in the time that we did without animals, but at the same time, I think it should be remembered that with COVID, a lot of the human trials progressed in parallel with the animal trials. It wasn't necessarily a case that the the next stage in testing in animals was dependent on the results in animals, so that's a another point to consider as well.
But it was essentially, as I understand it, as your description, I'll take this case, that there was a combination of of animal and non-animal research work. Could I just ask you this question? Just trying to to reconcile the two. That do you believe that we will get a, we're capable of getting to a point um of of not being able to use any animals at all whatsoever to conduct the the medical research that uh drives what we do to try and enhance and improve you know, a range of matters to help people sort of health, welfare and wellbeing?
I think we will. I think it may be at least a couple of decades off, but I, that is my my ultimate aim and dream, that we get to that point. Um, and we are seeing developments in pharmaceuticals in terms of guidelines and acceptances and um the recent change, attempts to make changes in the U S so that non-animal methods can be used to validate drugs. So I think we are getting to that stage.
We're we're moving in that direction.
Hmm.
Can I ask you this question? Do you make any distinction between um the use of animals? I think I know your answer, but if you just clarify. The the uh pure primary research that's undertaken pure scientific research to try and understand things better and in an iterative fashion, build our knowledge, which is the way which science builds over time, as you'll be aware. And and preclinical trials and the use of animals with respect to those. Do you make a distinction between those two? In terms of, dare I say, my words, a justification for the
Yeah.
application of animal research?
Yes, I would make a distinction, because I think um in terms of the basic research, sometimes we see that that is more curiosity driven, and sometimes it really just seems it's a case of trying to get publication after publication. And I I gave an example in the submission about the for- force feed, um not force feeding, sorry, um feeding of rats, the lamingtons, to evaluate the impact of a fast food diet, which I think really is just duplicating current knowledge about diet and health. So um I would make a distinction between um some of that research, which I would say is to obtain a PhD or to um maintain a career, and some of the pre- preclinical research. I would make that distinction, not in all cases, but in in some cases, and obviously legally, the preclinical research at this stage has to use animals and the and the basic research doesn't, so um there is also a distinction in the way we might view those on on that point as well. In terms of why are you using animals if you don't have to?
Okay, so, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Um, Ms. Smith, um, I just want to ask a question about, I don't know if you heard when Professor Cunningham before said that um he he gave, basically gave some evidence about if we didn't use um animals for medical research here, then some of the research would go elsewhere, would go offshore. Um, what would you say in response to that?
Is he talking about, he's talking specifically about animal research, and is it is it his concern that that would impact on animal welfare or the quality of the research? I I wasn't sure.
I I think it was um one, one of the other members asked a question about what would happen if you if you weren't allowed to use um animals for medical research, and and he made the observation that without that being available, some of the scientists and uh and medical research here in in Australia
Yeah.
would go elsewhere, would go
Yeah.
um offshore to jurisdictions where where that would be available.
Yeah, I mean, potentially that could happen, but then another consideration is that there is an increasing global trend towards using other methods and developing other methods, as we see with the alternative centers elsewhere. So it could be counterargued that if we're not embracing um new methods of technology here, then that, our researchers could be going overseas to follow that path, so um that's, that would be my response to that concern. And if if there is a concern about for example, primate research being conducted overseas and instead of Australia, and what the impact could be on animal welfare, then I think it's a case of um working with those countries to ensure that if we do have any partnerships with them, or we do have any research contracted out, that it meets the same requirements as here.
Have have any jurisdictions banned um um medical research on animals?
Um, there's a, there's phase out plans. Um, the U S one is working towards twenty thirty five in in chemical use, um and in the Netherlands, they have a transition plan to phase out certain types of research by twenty twenty five.
Thank you, Chair. Um, thank you very much for um for coming today and and providing some insights to the committee. It's really valuable to have both sides of the argument presented to us. Um, I'm just gonna follow on from some of the questions that my colleagues have asked, and um I I guess the first thing that I I just want to tease out is um to an answer to the Honorable Watch Secor, you said that you're opposed to all animal testing. Um, is that across all spectrums? Um, is there, is there circumstances where you um support um the the use of animals um in in any regime of testing at all?
Probably to some degree in veterinary research, if it's um, I mean, it's probably outside of the rooms of this um inquiry, but if it's um veterinary research, which could be, for example, training vets in using certain methods, um using animals, um so performing surgeries that they would be doing routinely as part of their training and they were supervised, or it was working with a client and their pet to try and um be involved in a new trial of a product. Um, wouldn't necessarily be opposed to that, or conservation research, or, excuse me, environmental research, that was in the detriment of those animals, but that's probably, as I said, outside the rooms of this um inquiry.
So there are, there are circumstances where you would accept that animal research is appropriate?
Yes, I think particularly, as I said, for veterinary research and not really having that same species um difference, so that's one of the the reasons why I'd be supportive of that.
So how do you establish a threshold for that? Given that um my my interpretation of your original answer was that you were opposed to it, but um I guess now we're uh going down the rabbit hole of there are circumstances where you might think that that is appropriate.
Hmm.
How do you determine that threshold? What's the analysis you and your organization? And, sorry, your organization, how many um members do you have? Just out of curiosity.
We have about two hundred members, and we have a kind of a broader database of about six thousand people.
And then how do you join your organization, if I'm just, like, say, say, somebody's watching this broadcast today and they're um they're taken with the 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 aims of your organization. How do they join?
Um, they um pay an annual membership and we, our committee approves all the members.
Okay. And uh the committees, how many people?
Five.
Okay. And how do you get elected to the committee?
Um, you you stand as a, for members to vote for you. We have a lecture every year. Stand for a minimum of two years, and then we have a voting process.
Okay, and how much is the membership fee?
Just going up to thirty three dollars.
Okay, oh, there's your free add. So um now we'll go back to the um, back to the um, the question I was asking, which was, how how do you um determine, so do you, with with the number of members that you have, do you have a process where those members um have input into um policy positions that the organization might take?
Um, well, we have, I guess, a constitution in there signing up in alignment with the constitution that we have, um, and our um mission and vision is publicly available on the website for those members to determine if our our policies tend to be more organizational policies that we might develop in relation to compliance, for example, which the committee approve rather than the members, but if we have a position at the A G M, it's not a policy change, then we'd put it forward at an A G M to be approved.
Do you think the membership would be surprised to hear that you are uh open to a level of um uh research using um uh animals under the circumstances with which you articulated earlier?
Um, well, I'm I'm not suggesting that we're supportive of it, I'm just putting forward the agreement that we need, the position that we need to expand um non-animal methods to the point where it's realistically going to be accepted by the research community and used in a in a time of disaster such as COVID. And we're probably not at that point yet, but I think the members would be understanding of the limitations that currently exist. And not all of our, some of our members working animal research, so they would be more than aware of those limitations.
Okay. So in the circumstance where um there is uh by your definition, an acceptable um uh acceptable reason to need um and implement animal research, uh, how do you reconcile um the the needs of um the primate or or animal, uh, the the human um uh race, or I mean, you know, the human body with which, um, you know, that a vaccine might be um used on? Um, and the the organizations with whom perhaps might be able to monetarize uh some of that research later? How do you reconcile that um with with your group?
Sorry, can you rephrase that? Sorry.
Uh, I guess I'm trying to to work out is uh in a circumstance where your your organization is primarily opposed to animal uh research, how do you how do, within your group, do you accept that there are thresholds for uh research that um will benefit the human population? Um, and that's acceptable, and there are others that that won't. Like, for example, someone raised cosmetic surgery and the like earlier, I would imagine that would be.
Point of order, Chair. I I just feel that the member's putting words in in the witness's mouth. I mean, she was quite clear about what she did.
Order.
Say that she supported.
Well, she did say she supported with respect to veterinary research. I clearly said that, but but.
That's what I'm trying to tease out, yeah.
Perhaps put the question.
Yeah.
No point of order.
So um, yeah, yeah. In the circumstance where, um, for example, cosmetic surgery might not be appropriate. Um, on the other scale, we've had a pandemic where, you know, obviously it's been required. Where do you see that transition point?
Um, I think probably our members and myself, there's always usually, I guess, a inclination to be more opposed to those research practices that you would see as most unnecessary, like cosmetic surgery, or the forced swim test, or other methods, but our central positioning is that research would be more effective if we weren't using um animals, so we really have that across the the board. It's not a case of we don't want there to be research that's conducted into smoke-related illnesses because people shouldn't smoke. It's it's not kind of picking the um the issues that are most severe or most um um unavoidable. It's looking at the 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 most effective way of um achieving medical progress across across all areas, really.
Because I think there's no no doubt that this committee, and I I expect medical professionals yourself, we all grapple with that um that uh issue of um what is the line?
Hmm.
Now, um, if there was research that was perhaps to save one human life, or, you know, the potential to save one human life where there was a very rare uh diagnosis that animal research, um and, and, you know, perhaps sacrificing one or two animals in order to um have an outcome that would save a human life, um would mean, you know, perhaps the death of one animal to save a human life in that limited research um circumstance. Or, you know, the pandemic where, you know, millions of lives are probably saved through the delivery of vaccines. Where do you see that benefit to to human life? How how many human lives do you think are an appropriate number to have to save in order to um endorse that research?
I don't think we have a a set point of lives that we think that are equivalent to animals. I think it's more considering the interests of of all and trying to find the most effective research, which costs less, least lives in terms of animals and humans, and is whether we could, in that same scenario, try and find a human relevant research method that would have genuine chance of helping in that rare disorder. That's what we would be um advocating for. I think you you, the way you're looking at it is that um it's either humans or animals, but that's not, that's not our philosophy.
Yeah. So just from that answer you just gave, can can I take it that you would prefer that testing happen on humans uh over animals? Would, you say the human testing regime was a substitute perhaps for animal testing? Was that?
Well, not just thoroughly talking about going straight to um human trials without prior testing. It's talking about human derived cells and or materials or epidemiological data, and then um using that human relevant research, so it's not, you know, picking prisoners or picking a member of the community to test on. Um, it's very different human relevant research to testing directly on humans.
And how effective um is the research uh that's from those derived
Yeah.
to um say primate or or other animal research? Is it is it reasonably um does it correlate?
Yeah, so I've actually got a, an example, a recent example which I read, which was looking at um organ-on-a-chip technology, and it was, um, they looked at twenty seven drugs, twenty two of which had previously been found to be toxic in humans. And that toxicity resulted in two hundred and eight patient fatalities and ten liver transplants. That was after the drugs had been tested in in lab animals. And the organ chip methodology, it identified eighty percent of these drugs as toxic. And had this technology been used and available from the start, those drugs wouldn't have made it to human trials and resorted in these fatalities. So there's definitely concrete examples of where the non-animal methods are um are more accurate, actually.
So can I take it that the fact that we haven't implemented that across the board would mean that there is variability depending on what you say that we're testing and the results, or or is it the fact that that is a more um more reliable method and and there are other reasons why we're still continuing this path?
Yeah, I think a lot of it is down to the fact that it's still a new technology. People are still being trained in it. Um, there's still validation um processes that are going in place with the organ-on-the-chip, but that's one of the technologies that the FDA is earmarked for validation first, so I think that's probably one of the ones that we'll see um used in detecting effects of 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 drugs.
So potential in the future, but at the moment, there's a lack of um lack of data to support that it provides reliable information. Is that correct?
I don't know so much. It's a lack of of data, but maybe um lack of acceptance by the regulatory agencies, still probably um a couple of years off that point.
Are you aware of any circumstances where uh those uh testing methods have failed? Or haven't provided um a strong result?
Or hasn't correlated with the actual data. Um I'm sure there would be some examples. I I don't have them to hand, but, you know, they're a new developing system, so um I have no doubt that they still have some way to go.
So, thank you. No, I appreciate, I appreciate the insights. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thanks, Ms. Smith. That's been very, very helpful and enlightening, um, providing with the opportunity, I think, to elucidate and expand on. Provided with the opportunity, I think, to elucidate and expand on what was a very detailed submission. And we thank you for preparing that detailed submission. So that brings us to our short break for morning tea, so-
Would you mind if I just table a document, sorry?
Uh, yeah, yeah, well, yes, what, yes.
I just wanted to table this document. It's from the UK Report of the All Party Parliamentary Group for Human Relevant Science. And I think it's, well, a similar, the, the end result of a similar process to this. So I thought it might be useful to share and there's some useful information there about particular types of drugs and where we're at with those.
We'll process it, thank you very much. Thank you very much, you will break for morning tea.
Thank you.
What we'll do now is have you formally sworn or affirmed to give your evidence this morning. So perhaps easier to start with my left professor, we'll just move across. Get each of you pleased to state your name, your position, title, swear an oath or affirmation, whichever you prefer. The words are written before you, if it's not, just put your hand up, so we'll start with Professor.
Okay, thank you. My name is Robert Brink, I'm Senior Principal Research Fellow at the Garvan Institute in Sydney. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much, Professor Schofield.
Thank you, I'm Professor Peter Schofield. I'm here in three capacities as a board member of the Association of Australian Medical Research Institutes, as the Chair of the New South Wales Chapter of that body and as the CEO of Neuroscience Research Australia.
Thank you, Professor.
And I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you, Professor, and Professor O'Connell.
Yes, my name's Fourpo Conal, I'm the Executive Director of the Westmead Institute for Medical Research. And I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth of the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you, Professor. Well, with that out of the way, just remind members, if you've left, use your mobile phone, just check the mobile phones to sign, so we're not interrupted. In fact, each of you, starting with Professor, we'll cross the issue this way, we just follow this format, to, to make an opening statement and we'll proceed through all of you. And then after that, we'll open up for questions from the committee side, thank you, Professor.
Okay, thank you. As I said, I'm Robert Brink from the Garvan Institute, I'm actually Director of the Translation Science pillar there. And Garvan is the largest medical research institute in New South Wales, located down in Darlinghurst. So I personally have had 30 years' experience in, in working with mouse models for medical research, with a particular expertise in immunology research and also in the generation and use of genetically modified mice in medical research. So just to summarise the major points of our submission, many of the major advances in medicine have been brought about through the use of animals in medical research and thereby have led to great reductions in human suffering. For many purposes, there is no current alternative to the use of animal models, basically because the complexity of, of living beings is such that we can't model that computationally or outside the living being. And so we believe for the time being and, and as far as we can see, animal models will be essential for advancing medical research. Animal experimentation is very highly regulated and overseen independently by the Animal Ethics Committees which run through the various research institutes. And it's very clear that only research which absolutely requires animals is approved by these ethics committees and, and research cannot take place without their approval. I would also say that animal, animal experimentation activity brings quite a strong economic benefit through the employment of people who are working in the care and, and maintenance of animal colonies, but also through the research jobs involved. And so I would underline that Garvan actually established about 10 years ago Australian Bioresources on a disused or an old farm down near Moskell. It's a significant local employer down there and a significant part of the colony there. And it's a state-of-the-art in terms of animal care, thank you.
Thank you, Professor Schofield.
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to be here and to answer your questions. So AMRI, the Association of Australian Medical Research Institutes, is the peak body with 58 members nationally and 20 in New South Wales. Our members undertake collectively, and you have three of us here today, about 40% of all government-funded medical research comprised by nearly 20,000 staff and $2 billion in, in research expenditure across the whole gamut of activity. MRIs in New South Wales are global leaders in their field and are responsible for advancing medical research that both saves lives and reduces disease burden. In the AMRI submission, we make three recommendations to this committee and thus to the New South Wales Government, to work with stakeholders to develop accredited training standards and training programmes for staff working with animals in research, to fund initiatives that can help develop alternate methodologies to replace, refine and reduce the number of animals used in medical research, and to work through the coag process to establish a national centre for the replacement, refinement and reduction of animals in research. I would like to address some misconceptions which I've heard or seen in other submissions. We do not consider we're at the point that we can replace animals with alternates at this stage. There have been advances, there are alternative methodologies in some areas, and they do present opportunities to reduce the number of animals used. But this will take time and will take investment, this was acknowledged by the previous witness. Those opposed to the use of animals in medical research point out, as did the last witness, a large number of pre-clinical trials using animals that didn't lead to a new medicine. And they present this failing as an unnecessary use of animals. This is far from the case. Most drugs developed fail to reach the market. Animal testing is just but one portion in that process. The pharmaceutical industry wishes they had a better pathway to get new medicines effectively to the community. But pre-clinical trials are just one of those stages in the continuum from research to a new medicine or treatment. Without testing in animals for safety and efficacy, it is impossible to take that next step. Without animal testing, the failure rate in clinical trials will be much higher and far more dangerous for humans because we would then be making humans the guinea pigs. The benefits gained from the use of animals in research have not been overstated, as some submissions contend. The progress that we've made in developing new knowledge, medicines and treatments would not exist without the careful and considerate use of animals in research. And if there were effective non-animal alternatives, and as I've said, there are many already, medical researchers would use them. Using animals in research is very expensive, very time-consuming and only undertaken to improve knowledge and the human condition. Finally, we are in strong agreement with the submissions from many organisations on the need for further investment in the three Rs and that we think Australia should have an integrated national approach to this. Jurisdictionally, we, we have to work together, thank you very much.
Thank you, Professor Schofield, Professor O'Connell.
Thank you very much. So apart from the Westmead Institute, I'm also representing a large number of medical researchers on the Westmead Health and Innovation Precinct, which is probably the largest health precinct in the southern hemisphere. And in making our submission, we wish to emphasise the importance of animal research in improving patient outcomes for a broad range of diseases. Medical research should be viewed as a continuum from dry laboratory computer modelling through to clinical trials. Animal research is an essential component of this continuum that cannot be excised from other research activities. Without animal research, our understanding of disease would be severely diminished. The introduction of new therapies severely curtailed and unreasonable burden and risk will be placed on vulnerable people who will either have their medical needs unmet or face an increased risk when new inadequately tested therapies are put forward for clinical trials without thorough evaluation. New South Wales has a strong regulatory regime to ensure the protection and welfare of all animals used for research. And in the case of non-human primates, there are additional layers of oversight and regulation, as is appropriate, and was outlined in our submission. We believe that the current regulatory framework is comprehensive and rigorous within a mandated good governance framework and does not need to be changed. And it's our opinion that further additional regulation will adversely impact productivity and cost without any improvement in animal welfare. In the case of non-human primates, we agree that institutions and ethics committees must ensure that the work is necessary, beneficial and humane. However, due to their relative similarity in behaviour and biology to humans, there will always be a role for non-human primates in research. Many small molecules or drugs that are designed for humans are inactive in rodents. Hence, the non-human primates play a small but important role in translating discoveries in lower-order animals into therapies in humans. Their similarities to humans in terms of receptor ligand compatibility and development means they have a special place in neuroscience research, immunology, vaccine development, pregnancy and gene therapy. For all these diseases, there are examples of non-human primate research yielding results that translated successfully into better patient care. Equally important are examples where therapies have not progressed to human trials due to failure in non-human primate testing, thereby sparing humans from the futility and risks of, of what would be a failed therapy. By its nature, this research is complex, requires a large multidisciplinary team and is expensive. As a developed nation with a comprehensive and high-quality research infrastructure, we have the capacity to undertake this research in areas that are aligned with our national research priorities and in a way that ensures the animals are adequately cared for. It's better that this research is undertaken in such a regulated environment, such as in Australia, because stopping it here will only mean it taking offshore to less regulated jurisdictions with resultant decrease in the welfare of animals. Another important consequence of further restricting use of animals for research is the impact this would have on the state's ability to benefit from the large global investment in biomedical technology. The New South Wales State Government has earmarked Westmead as a lighthouse precinct for biomedical commercialisation and investment and is expected to create more than 50,000 well-paid knowledge jobs in Western Sydney, based around the Westmead Health and Innovation Precinct. If access to the appropriate use of animals for research is unreasonably curtailed or impeded, then many world-class research groups in our institution would cease to exist. There would be a brain drain to other states and overseas. In the long term, this will lead to higher healthcare costs and an inability to develop appropriate responses to Australia's health priorities. The recent events around COVID-19 has been a classic example. The outstanding outcome in our state and nation was in a large part due to our long-established research expertise in viral and vaccine research. The development of RNA vaccines was very much dependent on animal research that occurred over several decades. The next epidemic may not be global, it may be regional, and weakening our research infrastructure will severely inhibit our ability to urgently address these future health challenges.
Thank you, Professor. Thank you, gentlemen, that's good, those statements set the scene very nicely. I should confirm, if I'm not aware of it or anyway, that with respect to your submissions, they've been received by the committee secretary, processed. The Association of Australian Medical Research Institutes, submission is number 226, and that's been processed and stands as a submission to the inquiries on the inquiries webpage. The Garvans submission stands as submission 219, been processed and stands on the webpage too for the inquiry and the Westmead Institute for Medical Research. Yours has been processed and stands as submission 219, inquiries that have all been received. Thank you for the information you've had with them. So we'll open it up for questioning, and we've got some time, which is good, so we'll do one round of 20 minutes each. And then we'll take the difference of the time to take a stand and to buy by three. So we'll get underway with the chair, it's here.
Upgraded, Nick.
Upgraded.
Welcome, thank, thank you, Chair. I want to start with a question to Professor Brink. Your submission says that the government is falling behind other countries when it comes to supporting and funding alternatives to animal research. I'm just wondering why you say that and what countries we should be looking at and what models are happening as best practice overseas for those alternatives?
Could you just tell me where that is, sorry, in the-
Sorry, I don't have your submission in front of me. While you're looking for that, I might move to Professor Schofield because I noticed you were nodding along as I asked that question because you also mentioned it in your submission. You said that the government should be funding more alternatives to animal research and that we should have a centre for alternatives. Can you sort of describe for us what, what they would look like and, and what we need?
So other jurisdictions, the chair, have introduced such centres, the UK, the Netherlands, I think Switzerland as well. So there are a number of countries that are exploring these issues. I think one of the, the challenges and perhaps the, the issue of dealing with also community expectation is that setting up some such centre needs to be able to move the whole, whole dial, not just do the work in isolation. So there needs to be acceptance as to what is a new approved alternative model if we're to replace an existing arrangement. And, and so that will take, you know, time, effort, diligence, statistical analysis of whatever is proposed. And there will, I think, be differences in each particular circumstance of, of what the purpose of animals was previously and what is proposed. As an example, it was stated by the previous witness that brain organoids could replace testing in animals. Stem cell technology has still got a long way to go. There are some areas where it's made major advances and there are a lot where there's still promise, potential, but not fulfilled delivery. Organoids are one aspect of stem cell science where you use the stem cell to generate a, a, something in culture that mimics the organ, a kidney, a brain, et cetera. It is not a kidney and it is not a brain, but it gets closer to it. So it, it gives the opportunity of doing a number of pre-clinical tests and establishing a standard methodology that would be accepted by regulators would be an important way of reducing animal usage numbers in that drug testing regime. But it's about getting a standard approach of something that everybody can agree on rather than one individual saying, oh, I've got an idea out here, oh, I've got an idea out there. I don't think that will help us.
Will fulfil. And, and I mean, it sounds like from what you're saying as well, that, you know, some of these alternatives need a lot more work done on them. And I'm guessing that that's why you're suggesting we need that government funding and we need that Centre for Alternatives so that there's kind of like a solidified base so that we can make sure that these alternatives that will replace animals are well-supported across the field. And, and if we were to do that, would, do you believe that that would significantly, eventually at some point, help us reduce the number of animals in research?
I, I do, and part of what we've seen in the reporting data from the Animal Review Panel is the number of animals used in research. I'm not sure why they all went up until about 2010, but, but they've certainly been coming down across the domain. And as, as I said in my opening comments, use of animals is very expensive and very time-consuming. And although others have suggested that researchers are vested in that space and therefore just want to keep on doing it, I, I don't think that's the position at all. Researchers have reached that position because they think that's the best way of gaining knowledge or the best way of developing a new therapy. And it's the regulatory role of the panel and the ethics committees to actually test those assumptions, to make sure that any particular proposal is, is valid, has legitimate reasons and, and to define how they have, how they, the researchers, have considered reduction, refinement, replacement in, in the development of their proposition. So the more that something is, is developed that is a standard that, that everybody can agree in, the easier it would be to achieve that goal.
Thank you, Professor Brink, are you-
Yeah, I, Peter's covered it really nicely, I don't really have much more to add. I mean, there was a suggestion of, of the GPI seminars which were discontinued five years ago, which just our animal ethics persons was very bullish about them, thought they were a great idea, but they, they were discontinued due to funding, and that, I think that was his principal issue there. But I think in, in relation to the animal usage going up to 2010, I think that's really reflective of research funding, to be honest. of research funding, to be honest. And, you know, animal experimentation is very expensive, and it's actually more expensive now because the way the animal's cared for is much better than it ever has been. So people only ever do it if they really have to, because, you know, if you're trying to make your research budget stretch, doing animal research is not the way to do it.
Professor Schofield, your submission talks about the small number of animals that are imported for research. You mentioned at 5.4, you mentioned mice and rats and occasionally primates. Are you aware of any dogs or cats are being imported? I know that there's a dog breeding facility for medical research in New Zealand. Are we importing those animals as well, or is it limited to the mice, rats and primates?
To the best of my knowledge, we do not. And I checked with our executive officer who had assisted in the preparation and the principal drafting of this submission, and I think that question was asked of Tony Cunningham earlier. An ABR and ARC in Perth do not provide dogs or cats, and I don't believe any are imported.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but related to that point, I thought when the law changed in the late 1990s, dogs and cats were no longer used in animal, in medical research.
No, that's not correct. It's just that they're not allowed to be sourced from pounds.
That's right.
Yes, that was that legal change. What I've heard rumours of is that a lot of dogs and cats that are being used in medical experimentation are being sourced online through websites like Gumtree, where people put up an animal feed at Good Home, and that's the primary way that people are getting animals. So if the breeding facilities aren't providing them, if they're not getting them from pounds, if they're not being imported, do you think that there is perhaps some truth in the fact that people could be actually getting these animals from Gumtree?
I do not have any evidence to speak to that, but I guess I'd turn around and say, this is a question you should direct to the animal research panel, who have the oversight of the legislation and receive the reports from the respective animal ethics committees. I don't think that most people would find that to be a particularly good way of getting, you're going to get probably diseased or end-of-life animals, et cetera. So if that was the case, I would not have thought that that would have been supported by the animal research panel or ethics committees.
So you would be quite concerned if that was proven to be correct?
Correct.
Thank you. You also talk in your submission at 7.3 about the rigorous process to get money from the NHMRC, which is obviously a federal funding body. We know that there is state funding as well being provided within New South Wales, and I wanted to try to get some more information about the process of getting money from the state government. Is it as rigorous as that NHMRC funding and what is the process? How do people access this money for animal research?
Increasingly so. NHMRC have a very well-tested, I think we've all lived under, system of peer review, independent peer review and panels and so forth. State, the Office of Health and Medical Research, for example, is increasingly under the scrutiny of Treasury for value for money for the taxpayer and have been continually upgrading the independent panels and assessments of applications. I can't speak to whether that's the case for every piece of state funding, but certainly the Office of Health and Medical Research is very substantively relying on independent assessment panels in the same way that NHMRC does.
So the peer review and the independent peer review process that happens with the NHMRC is happening in New South Wales?
Correct.
And how do universities get money, say, for honour students doing medical research on animals? I'm assuming that's not coming from these much more rigorous processes?
Look, I'll let my colleagues offer some other observations, but the federal government funds universities for the education component, that includes honour students, but that does not include any of research project costs. They're meant by the academic or the supervisor, each of us are supervisors in our university appointments, and have variously hosted honour students as well as postgraduate students. So if we had an honour student doing animal-based research, we would need to fund that out of our own research grants or out of our own institutional funds. Just look to my colleagues to see if they wanted to correct me in any way.
The way it would work, well, my personal experience is that normally you've got a large research group to which an honour student comes in and you give them a defined project, which they only have nine months to do. And normally, if it's animal-related research, they're part of a bigger team and they get some component of that. So that work, that they're sort of slotted into a bigger team of work that's already funded to be done. It'd be logistically and cost-wise not very effective to have an honour student, you know, have to go through and then get an ethics approval and then wouldn't have the capacity to handle all the techniques and then have to do the training to handle animals and do all that within nine months and get results and write a thesis. So they're brought into a team, they learn good practice by being in a larger team with more skilled people, and overall, it's a much better learning experience. Thank you.
Thank you, and good afternoon to all of you. I wanted to start just by, I guess, reflecting in your submission, Professor O'Connell. There's, you know, a bit of talk about 3D printing and there's, across all of your submissions, there's discussion of the new technologies that are developing that, I guess, the last witness, when she was referring to, she'd imagine maybe in a couple of decades, we could really quite radically reduce the number of animals in research, that that's kind of where we're headed. And it's hard to imagine those technologies until they come, you know, that's true in a lot of areas. I guess, what is holding us back from developing those technologies quicker? Is it a product of just purely a lack of research funding from the government, or are there other sort of commercial factors at play? What do you think?
Well, I think it's, well, you could, you'd never ask a researcher to give up opportunity to say it wasn't due to lack of funding. So I'd put that definitely on the record. But in reality, these are new technologies and you have to develop them. And then, once you develop them, then all of a sudden you have a capacity that you never had before. So one of the ways that that then changes, you're not sort of there thinking, well, I can do this, instead of doing it in animals, I can do this. What you say, this provides me an opportunity, which doing it in animals wouldn't do. And a lot of that's through using combination chemotherapies on it or high-throughput screening of molecules. So all of a sudden, you can do things at scale and then you can identify some combinations or some new treatments that you say, look, this is really interesting, and then that may go to, may go to animal models or may not. So it's sort of, it brings, it brings you a capacity that you never had, and it does, it does reduce animal use, because if you had to do all those animals, and a lot of those wouldn't work, you know, when you screen something, you're only, you're going for a needle in a haystack, sort of, that it, it wouldn't be realistic to do that with animals, but if you did, you'd have a lot of animals, that it was sort of like, it'd be a futile outcome. Whereas if you've got a much more focused set of molecules you're looking at, then if you go to animal work, then that's more likely to get a positive outcome that you're looking for, which then moves further up the development scale. It could, 3D printing overcome animal research? I think in some instances it will, but it's hard to, for me to see that it would exclusively, you know, be on in the next 10 or 15 years.
But when, sorry, just to refocus that question before I come to you, Professor Schofield, the, I guess, when we're looking at the three Rs, to what extent does simple cost come into it when making a decision between, do we use this alternative technology or do we continue to use animals?
I don't think it comes down to that. That's three, I mean, it may, in some places, it may be availability, it's new technology and it's expensive. And by being in a large precinct like we are, that we, for high-cost equipment, we have, we put that into core facilities so multiple groups can use that. So I think that technology is developing, but if it gets, gets to the, excuse me, if it gets to the point where it can give you the information in a much more comprehensive way than you're going to get from doing an animal study, because everything has its limitations, then people will move to do that. And as I said, the other thing is that we can do, because of the technologies and the tools that we're using, you can get a lot more information in a smaller number of animals than would have occurred 10 or 15 years ago. So having access to, you know, advanced imaging, you know, flow cytometry, genomics, 3D printing, all those new technologies that are coming through now and are very expensive, having good access to that and people who know how to use those machines properly, that will inevitably lead to less animal use.
Thank you, Professor Schofield.
Might I give you an example from the current COVID pandemic? Cell culture is a very valuable way of testing compounds, and one of the compounds that was tested in cell culture was the antihelminthic drug, ibumectin. But it was tested at a concentration far higher than is suitable to give to humans. And in a sense, the flurry of excitement around trying to find ways of dealing with the pandemic meant that this ineffective and subsequently debunked approach had no validity. But non-animal testing said ibumectin could reduce the impact of the virus in cell culture. It was just dangerous for humans at that dose. So that little vignette sort of highlights, there are absolutely ways where non-animal testing can be used, but we also need to make sure that they're right, relevant and meaningful for translating through to the human condition.
But on that, I presume it's not your evidence that there will never be a situation where we could develop that sort of a, where we could have tested ibumectin on some other non-animal method?
I agree with you.
Just not right now?
Correct, I agree with you. In that case, it was a known drug, there were already knowledge from use in animals, and I believe it has been used previously in humans, but is not routinely, I stand to be corrected on that. What I'm agreeing with you is that that approach is not an inappropriate approach. We both agree on that. It was just the rush to get something meant that an initial preliminary result at a level and dose that wasn't appropriate for use in humans got widespread endorsement, and people were sort of using without proper medical device are often causing serious issues and complications. And that's the tension between bringing some of these non-animal methodologies through to the point where they become standards, accepted and widely used. And then if they are cheaper, easier, as cell culture is of animal use, then that's where people would go.
Professor Brink?
Just circling back to what you were originally asking about the barriers, I think one of those is really developing a great way of, a really reproducible way of doing something. So if you're growing, say, an organ culture that you want to use for testing, it's actually incredibly labour-intensive and very finicky. I mean, because what we're asking is to maintain something which normally survives in a body, outside of a body. And so cell culture, where you have like cancer cells which grow very well, you know, suspension culture, they can wander around, do whatever they like. You're asking for an organ to form and you need cells which are able to communicate to each other, form a structure, interact, that's a next level of complexity. And so I'm not saying that we won't get to a point where that's possible and we're able to do that reproducibly, but it does take a lot of refining, you know. So when something, it's a bit like, if you think of a Model T compared to a Porsche, you know, that's a result of a lot of refining over many years. And so that can do a lot of things which, you know, the old cars couldn't. So, but that does require widespread uptake, people finding better ways of doing it through, you know, testing various, so an original idea can show a lot of promise, but may not be universally, you know, great for testing a whole range of things without a bit of development. And so that's the sort of thing which does require a bit of investment.
The sort of ideology, I guess, a lot of, for a lot of government decisions around research and other, a whole lot of other things, is basically that the, you know, that companies and the markets will come up with the solutions to push us where we need to go. When it comes to getting us to a point where we have technologies that, as alternatives to animal research, that are more, I guess, easy to use and cost-effective, et cetera, do you believe that really there is no alternative to having government funding in those sorts of technologies? Is that what is going to be needed in order to sort of hasten the pace of that change?
If we considered this from a new drug perspective, it goes through the regulator, the Therapeutic Goods Administration in Australia, the FDA in America. They provide guidance to companies about what data is needed to demonstrate the safety, reliability, efficacy, consistency of manufacture, et cetera, et cetera. So they collectively, the regulatory agencies would need to adjust their requirements. They would want to be harmonised, because if we moved over here and the EU and the FDA were there, Australia would be deprived of a number of medicines if we raised the bar. On the other hand, all regulatory agencies are raising the bar in terms of quality and efficacy. So that would be something I think governments would need to fund, because they're asking their regulators to adopt alternate standards that they consider would provide the safety to the community. So, yes, we can get there, but I think that would have to be government-supported so that there was an evidence base for the regulators. The pharmaceutical companies who are putting forward submissions would then mirror their data according to what the regulators want and need.
Thank you.
Thank you. Government members want to...
Thank you for your evidence so far. I think Professor O'Connell, in your opening statement, you spoke about what the impacts would be if we banned or curtailed research into using animals or primates generally. I was wondering if you could expand a bit more on that. We heard from Professor Cunningham this morning that potentially scientists would just move overseas, a lot of the medical research funded might move to other jurisdictions. I was wondering if you could expand a bit more on what the impacts might be?
Well, I think it would be wrong to put it for New South Wales to be in a position that wasn't in broad agreement with the rest of the other states on this. And as I said in the submission, that you look at medical research, it's a continuum and from, you're doing computational models in silicon, you know, computer designing things, and then it has to get tested in the real world. And you can do some of that in laboratory-based work and in test tubes, but then you also then need an animal model depending, especially when you're looking at disease-specific things. So you're looking at autoimmune disease, or you're looking at transplantation or kidney disease, then that's a really complex interaction between sort of immunology, physiology and endocrinology and all these things. And if you, you can't create that at the present time, even with 3D printing, and therefore these need to be worked in an animal model. So if you're interested in studying a disease, then what you're interested in is using the technologies that are available to you to get you the answers you need. A central component of that is animal research. So if that's not available to you here and you're a world leader, then you're going to go somewhere else where you've got it, you've got access to that type of research. And I'm not talking going to some, you know, undeveloped country, you can go to the United States or to Europe or to Melbourne. You can go to the United States or to Europe or to Melbourne, where you would have that access and you would have other people working around you in this broader picture. So I think the concept that you're working in isolation and you're doing these things totally out of your own curiosity isn't, those days went out in the nineteenth century. That really what it is, is teams of people with specific skills that are all brought together to answer a complex problem.
So there's no, and I asked this of a previous witness as well, there's no, there wouldn't be a jurisdiction around the world that has successfully banned or significantly curtailed animals in the use of medical research, or a journal, or any that you're aware of?
None that I'm aware of. And if you look at the place where the big drivers of medical research, such as the United States, Europe, increasingly Japan and Korea, that all those places have access to medical research. And in some of those, I would say our regulations are a higher standard in those and those were all considered, you know, first class places to do medical research. And many of the people who work and come back and work here have trained over in those places. So I think we're very, medical research is one of our, you know, for our size and our isolation is one of our good news stories. And that's because we do look outside ourselves to what's happening, but if you don't have all the tools available to you, then you're inevitably going to fall behind.
And what, and this is a very difficult question, and it's probably not one that you can answer even if you take it on notice, but it's probably more just as a benchmark or getting some idea for this inquiry. How important is it? I mean, if we, if you look, what's the, what quantum are we looking at in terms of, if we went to, went to a pharmacy or a hospital or what, how important is it? Is it that only a handful of drugs, for instance, on the PBS as an example, have been tested on animals? Or is it that almost every single drug is, it would have been? Like what, what sort of scale are we looking at? Because I don't think we would have any idea of that at the moment.
The way I would put it, it'd be, is more generational. So, you know, for me and the grey hair that sits on this side here is that, you know, we've had the benefit of unprecedented improvements in medical health compared to our parents. And, you know, if I look when I was an intern, what operations were done that aren't no longer done anymore because we've just improved things. You know, we don't have to cut people open to stage their lymphoma like they did when I started training. So if you look at what's occurred, we're the huge beneficiaries of a lot of medical research and there's been an unprecedented increase in life expectancy in this country. So, and if you take the instance thing about COVID and RNA vaccines, that all started when people identified toll-like receptors, which is a molecule on cells that they see viruses and bacteria molecules. And they weren't invented and it was all worked out in animals. And that was done, what, you probably know about ten, fifteen years ago?
Nineties.
Yeah. So all of a sudden, that research has come into benefit now. So it's not, will I be disadvantaged as a, you know, in terms of my day-to-day life? Not much, but my children will and my grandchildren will, because there'll be just a stop and all that. And that's what I think is a generational change, that we'd be taking a system that's given us unprecedented good health at a global scale and putting that at risk for, you know, for no, what I would consider no rational reason. Should we move to doing things that use less animals? Yes. Should we look for new technologies? Most definitely yes. Even if, regardless of what your views are on animal research, we should be taking that pathway. But what, it's a generational impact that we're having if we just all of a sudden stopped using that.
Chris, do you mind? I was just got one final one. Just generally to all three, what, how have you found the regulatory regime in New South Wales? I assume it's quite strict, but hopefully not too onerous. And how have you felt, how have things been dealing with the Animal Ethics Committee?
Well, I chaired our Animal Ethics Committee at the Saint Vincent's Precinct, which incorporates the Victor Chang Institute of Governance and Saint Vincent's Hospital for a couple of years and obviously have been involved with them for many years. It's, it's not onerous, it's not. It's, and it's, there's a series of really fair questions which make you think about what you're doing. Do you really need to use animals for this? And think about the three Rs as you're doing it. How many do I need? What is the best way I can do this? So I think that's a huge improvement from when I started back in, you know, late eighties. And what I really like is the makeup of the ethics panels, which includes not only a couple of scientists, but vets to laypeople and animal concerned people as well. So, and they're all given, in my experience, really fair hearing, all their concerns are listened to. And they interact really positively with the scientific and veterinary people on the panel. And I find that, you know, I've seen applications be refused and, you know, and quite justifiably, you know, with the agreement of everyone for certain projects. So, and I think that the whole process is good and well overseen by DPI as well with their regular inspections and oversight. So I think, I think it's pretty good at the moment. I think it's covered really well and animal welfare is really a top concern of the panel and filters through the whole system, all the way through to the animal house, people working in the animal house, the onsite animal welfare person who's associated, is associated with every animal facility is independent of the, of the person who's physically running the logistics of the facility. So they're there specifically to be the point person for animal welfare. So I find that really works really well and they have productive interactions with the researchers and it's a really supportive environment because everyone knows that, you know, having animals well looked after is the only way to actually get good data, to get reproducible data and to minimize the use of animals as well. So I'd give it a tick, if I saw it, if I should.
I just concur with Robert's comments, but if I may go back to your earlier question, I'm hazarding a guess, but I doubt that there would be any drugs on the pharmaceutical benefit scheme that have not been through some component of animal testing, not necessarily in Australia obviously, but as part of the regulatory and approval submissions.
Yeah, and I'd add that the basic knowledge for why we know those things are going to work came from animal work. And often the monoclonal antibodies which were generated to actually be used were made in mice as well, immunized mice. So they're an integral part of a whole number of steps through the process. Yeah, I would say vast majority, I'll answer your question.
Thank you. Thank you very much gentlemen for coming today and appearing before the committee. I imagine all three of you familiarize yourself with the terms of reference to the inquiry and you would have done so when you've put together your submissions. I appreciate that we've got you for quite a long period of time today. However, if I'm just looking through the terms of reference, I think you've pretty much already covered a lot of it with your evidence. With part A, the nature and proposed effectiveness of medical research being conducted on animals in New South Wales, potential public health risks and benefits posed. It would be fair to say that we've discussed that the medical research that's being done in New South Wales is, in your opinion, appropriate, it's considered, it's ethical and it's for the benefit of the populace of New South Wales and more broadly Australia and across the, you know, across the rest of the world.
Agreed.
Okay, so we'll go to part B, the costs associated with animal research to the extent at which New South Wales and the federal government is commissioning and funding the importing, breeding and use of animals in medical research in New South Wales. I don't expect that you'll be able to provide much by way of costs, but do you know whether the importing, breeding and the use of the animals is a, I guess, a large scale thing that's happening in New South Wales or is it something that's more bespoke and typically smaller in scale than what you might see in other jurisdictions?
I think it's consolidating. So I think the ABR that Robert can talk to, we get a lot of our animals from there because they provide a good facility and they're very professional organization and that means that there's much more efficiency in breeding the animals than doing it yourself. So most of the, we've gone away from, unless it's some bespoke animal that for some reason can't go there, we, most of the animals, I would say from our institute are bred there in terms of mice. Non-human primates, they're in national colonies and they've got oversight by the NH and MRC. They're captive bred, they're not imported and I am unaware, I'm personally unaware of any of those animals that are imported for that. So the main animals that, and then there's some work in large animals and they're normally sheep or pigs and they're not imported. But the main animals that are imported, to my knowledge, have come, it's a specifically genetically modified mouse and you normally go to Jackson Laboratories, which is a world famous place in Maine in the US that has a big place and they would then even bring animals across and then you have acquiesced permission and then they would then go to be bred. But it's here, so most of that's done here and by consolidating, we've got these cost efficiencies.
Beautiful. Going to part C, the availability, oh sorry, do you want to make it just?
Sure. One brief comment to that. Firstly, I do understand this to be probably confirmed by the primate colonies, but there is occasional importation of colony bred primates for genetic refreshment of the colonies. So just, I think, slight correction there. But certainly not of any wild.
We're not, we're not, you know, we're not sending somebody over on a plane with a net and a tranquilizer gun and, you know, smuggling them back in.
Absolutely not. And the second, just in terms of the economic argument, whilst, and again, I don't know any specifics on this for the national primate facilities, but in terms of their funding arrangements, but we too at Nura opted to use ABR as a much more efficient way of managing breeding, using less numbers of animals because they could be housed at one colony and effectively transported to the various usage sites. So did the University of New South Wales when the ABR started and many others around the state and country. You asked the question about, well, the terms of reference are the federal and state dollars. So they would largely come from research grants. So the individual researcher would be paying for the supply, delivery of those animals. The institutions cover the housing and maintenance of those animals typically once they're on site, again, often with a sort of a per cage charge for room cleaning and the like. So just to.
No, no, this is, I think what's really important is, just going through the terms of reference, we're able to actually drill down to those, the issues that we are, you can get, that were actually referred to when we're actually developing a report.
So the other point to make about the NHMRC dollars, they have strict rules on how much they'll give you to do for provision of animals for your research and it's never meets the actual cost. So when you undertake, so it's got a success rate of less than 10% to get an NHMRC grant. And when you take that on, you're taking on a cost because you won't be fully funded by that research.
And I guess that's a disincentive for people to do animal research that is of not a substantial nature because there is that incurred cost that as the grant will not cover the total cost of the actual research primate or animal as required. If we go to part C, the ability, effectiveness and funding of alternative approaches to animal research and the triple Rs, we've talked about that, haven't we? You know, we've said that, you know, there's work ongoing, but we're not there yet, are we? You know, we're not, we're not at the point where we can replace safely the use of animals in research.
And an individual could put forward a proposition to state government, to the federal government in one of those funding schemes for a particular research project to enhance the three Rs. It would then be assessed on its merits against all of the others, but there is no dedicated allocation of funding to achieve those goals.
Part D says the ethical and animal welfare issues surrounding importing, breeding and use of animals in medical research. Well, I think we just covered that quite succinctly and we covered the, I guess, issues of not only colony breeding of, you know, large primates, but also, you know, where that genetic new material is required. It's done through a, you know, an import program in an ethical way.
I could add a point there. There's been a big advance recently now in terms of using sperm as something you send over the seas. So rather than transporting live mice, what we have at ABR and lots of places now is the ability to basically do an IVF with imported sperm. So that's really cut down a lot on the transportation of live animals. And so that's, I think it's a great example of the three Rs applying in that particular sphere.
Yep. And the ethical, I guess, treatment of those animals is paramount and it's quite strictly regulated within your organization. Does that be a fair thing to say?
Absolutely.
Accuracy of the current regulatory regime regarding to the use of animals in medical research, particularly in relation to transparency and accountability. I have no doubt that every one of the organizations with which you represent and with whom you may have association with around the research of use with animals is quite heavily regulated and it's, the transparency and accountability you would say is of a high level, if not the highest level?
Well, I can vouch that you're going to get, your ethics committee and your animal facilities are going to get audited and the DPI has audited that. And there's community involvement, so it's transparent and there's people from the animal welfare. So this, this is as open as it can be. And as I said, it's audited both by the ethics, your work's audited by your ethics committee and the ethics committee is then audited by the DPI and in the case of primates, by several other bodies as well.
Chair, with indulgence, I've just got one more part to get to and then I could almost say that I'm done with my questions because I think these gentlemen have really covered off everything.
Okay, just, just be quick.
So we've got the overseas developments regarding regulation and use of animals in medical research. I guess the bit that I wanted to touch on there was, obviously, are we in line with what's happening in other jurisdictions around the world? But B, is, is the regulation in Australia likely to be stronger than some of the other foreign jurisdictions? And if we were to not allow or to limit the amount of research that was happening here and it was sent overseas, would there be a lower level of regulation, transparency and accountability, in your opinion?
So I think there's two parts to that question.
There was.
The first one is, does Australian, do Australian standards, New South Wales standards, conform to the best standards around the world? I think the answer is yes. Do the other jurisdictions have something that could assist in reducing numbers of research? And I touched on that earlier with the three R centers in the UK, Netherlands, et cetera. So I think those are places we do not have that. And so that's, that's a way where we could enhance reduction, refinement, replacement of animals in research. The final piece, I think, is very important. Philip, in his earlier comments, talked about individual researchers moving to an environment that enabled the full spectrum of medical research. But equally, I think it's a cop-out as, for us as a society, if we ban something here but allow it to happen elsewhere. We do not have slavery here, but you can pay money and have your stuff made somewhere else by slavery. And so in the same way, we would be actually doing a disservice and being inhumane to the use of animals for research if we allowed that backdoor type of approach.
Abrogating our social responsibilities. Yeah. Chair, I think, I think they've covered off very well and I thank you very much for that.
Okay, thank you. My turn. So I'll post the questions that I've got here and listen, all can answer or one, just as you feel. I'm wondering if you could direct me and perhaps other committee members, if such exists, where we might find a diagram which in effect is like a flow chart of source, which would explain the steps that are required as a general proposition that one moves through from, I guess, conception of a medical research project right through to testing with respect to animals, just to help me grasp that. Would that be available as a sort of a document or? And I'd explain why because I'm struggling a little bit to understand the full set of stages in a typical project and how the stages are connected. And then my further interest is at each stage, the level of detail behind that and its rigor.
Mr. Chair, there's perhaps two components again. I think we might have to take on notice to find a best example of that. But I think it's also important to remember that it's very unusual for an individual to be involved in the very basic discovery research and take that particular thing the entire way through to a new medicine. You know, it's a long process, it involves many different skill sets and so forth. But the diagram, I think, we can come up with that and we'll take that one on notice.
I suppose in particular, looking at a hypothetical piece of research work.
But I understand exactly what you're saying. So if I could give you the example, the, I've got a blank on his name. The Society for Biomedical Research did an analysis of the 224 Nobel Prize winners in physiology or medicine and 188, if I remember my numbers, had used animals in some component of their research. Now, we use Nobel Prizes as the sort of the gold medal of the Olympics of science. Probably every one of us would give our rear teeth.
Lot fewer Nobel Prizes than gold medals.
Exactly, exactly. So, but they are, they're recognised because they are the epitome of innovation and change. Robert talked about monoclonal antibodies, which have, I don't know, 30, 50 year history of development in terms of our understanding of immunology. But today, almost every new life-saving drug that hits the market is a biological based on an antibody therapy. So through that process, they've relied on animals. Today, the product that you actually buy is no longer made in an animal, but some of the early monoclonals were made in animals. So it is that sort of continuum of building knowledge and then applying that knowledge. Again, Philip gave the example of the mRNA vaccine. You know, some complained around the COVID pandemic. How could you just have this new technology in 12 months? It must not be good enough. Well, the answer is it's had two or three decades worth of development and the humanitarian crisis just was enough to make those expedited decisions worthwhile. If it was normal process, I don't know, I think it'd still be another decade before we saw mRNA vaccines in widespread use.
I think that prior to that vaccine, the shortest time from developing a vaccine to getting on the market was four years and that was thought to be unprecedented. So that was, that was, this, what happened here was highly unusual.
Chair, can I maybe clarify your original question? Were you perhaps talking about an individual project?
Essentially so, yes. So I can understand.
Somewhere where a researcher would have an idea.
Proposition, yeah.
Proposition that applied for money would go through a grant funding agency, an HMRC.
And particularly where the ethics body has a role.
Right, right. I mean.
And does that ethics body then report?
Something that was clearly unethical, the grant application phase would be flagged. But otherwise, if it was funded, then you apply to your animal ethics committee. Detailed, detailed proposition about what exactly you're going to do, why you're doing it. And that would be overseen by the panel, go through rigorous oversight, feedback from all the members. Then you'd get, you could be told no, that's not going to fly. Or you'd be asked to answer a bunch of questions about, you know, have you considered this? What does this mean? Blah, blah, blah. And these responses go back and then the committee considers that and then decides whether or not to approve the protocol. And then you need to have a set of trained people who have all been trained in, you know, handling and working with animals, all of whom are cleared with the committee as having been trained. And then you've designated those people as working with the animals. And then at that point, you can start your, you start your experimental work.
And just to continue on, just if you don't mind, that presuming a student, as a example, a student would have an academic supervisor and that student obviously commences the, and I know this is very basic, but commences the piece of research that they're working on. Is there a role over the course of that research as being undertaken that feeds back into the ethics committee? Or the ethics committee at that point of approval has effectively completed their remit?
Well, I was just going to say, you have to make an annual report.
Okay, an annual report.
And you have to put down your publications from, directly from that research.
And are they in the public domain or are they generally available or not?
The reports?
Yeah.
I don't believe so, but have to take that on notice, I guess. Publications certainly.
So I went and guessed the endpoint of production of the publication with respect to the research.
For sure.
And the DPI, just perhaps the ethics committee reportage to the DPI, that is for all research projects in New South Wales involving sentinels? One of the matters put early to us today is this matter of wastage. I could sort of use that word, it's a bit of an adjective term, but the wastage of animals as part of animal research in the state. In fact, what the submission I'm looking at suggests that there are two million animals each year in New South Wales in excess of, I just read it out, it says, New South Wales typically are reporting usage of an excess of two million animals per year. So it sounds like a submission, a lot of animals excess to need. In other words, presumably have some role in the research but then expire or are killed, euthanased. Does that figure sound like a unreasonable figure or you don't know, you have to take it on notice? Because I presume that, without sort of reflecting on the smaller animals, presumably a number of those are rats and mice, perhaps. Would that be a fair comment or?
Yes, the DPI report figures don't dive down. They do report on species.
Species, yes.
And if you look through that, you will see that the vast numbers are rodents. And there are quite small numbers of higher animals. But the, the public figures of DPI don't, don't give that breakdown. So I think that's perhaps something you need to test with them. Again, we've both made the comment that we signed up to use the ABR or others also use the ARC facility in Perth to provide animals because it is more efficient, there is less, you know. To maintain a breeding colony requires animals. If the animals aren't actually to be used, then they become surplus. So then they would at some point be euthanased. So I'm assuming that that's where that number is, although I actually find that number feels very large to me.
Anyway, perhaps it might be a basis of a question on notice yourself to reflect further. In terms of the additional levels of conditions around experimentation with higher level animals. So if we move from the rodents through to the non-human primates and then we have sheep and pigs and others and perhaps hamsters and what have you. In terms of the detail around what is the additional considerations with respect to experimentation on these animals, on that sort of sliding scalable spectrum, there is presumably different conditions and different levels of requirement associated with the judgment to be exercised in regards to whether or not there should be experimentation on a particular class or species?
Yeah, I, I can sort of provide.
And if you take it on notice, I mean, I'm just trying to gather some understanding.
So basically, you have to put forward a good rationale why you're using non-human primates. The other thing is the numbers are so small and quite reasonably that almost every individual animal is accounted for to the ethics committee. So you have three ethics committees, you have, so there's your local ethics committee that looks, which would probably have sent it out for scientific advice, advice, that they would, they understand the local research conditions in the environment locally. Then is the Royal Prince Alfred Ethics Committee, which is the ethics committee that looks after the, well, it looks after the baboon colony here, but I guess whatever the colony is, the ethics committee associated with the colony. And in the cases of the baboons, there's also the Sydney University Ethics Committee because it's all sort of related. You then have, it then has to go to the DPI for it to look at, I think I wrote all this down. Then, then it goes to the, it goes to the research committee, NHMRC, non-human primate research committee. Well, of course, where it's funded by the NHMRC and that's most of that work. And then there's an animal research review panel of the DPI. And then when it's been through all that, then you can start. And in our experience, all the ethics committees and all the research committees personally inspected the facilities, looked at the record keeping, looked at the research. And I don't think, none of us are complaining about that, but I think that that level of oversight is much, much higher. And you have to have, you'd have, you have to put forward a good reason why you're at that point where you think you're, this is required to answer a specific question.
And I presume that that being understood by researchers, they would not really nearly be putting up research projects hoping they'll just happen to get through on a good day. I mean, that rigor, from what you've described, Professor, as a layperson appears to have a fair bit of thoroughness and gets through it.
It does, you have to look at the steep cost of looking after these animals. Then you have to have an expert team to look after the animals as well. So it's personnel intensive and resource intensive. And it's very, it's slow. You're not going to get, you're not going to get that done in a year it's going to take. Because of, because of, you've got, say, one or two animals at any one time you're studying. Depending on the work, you can't do a large number like you could in mice.
In an answer to one of the earlier questions, the statement was made, I just forget who it was made of, but it's been made also by other witnesses, that the standard of regulation in New South Wales is quite high, quite rigorous. Pick your word. I'm just wondering, your observations, and once again, take it on notice if you feel need to do so. Are there differences or perhaps marked differences between the state jurisdictions in Australia in regards to this rigor? Or because in fact, the research funding comes from that point that's been described and I presume that no state wants to be seen as a sort of a, on the bottom of the barrel. There is a sort of an internal pressure to maintain broad comment across the states. Is that a fair statement?
I don't think any of us are aware of there being dramatic differences in the regulation between states. And I think if there really was an outlier, it would be quite common knowledge. We don't know that.
No.
They're all governed by federal acts.
Yes, indeed.
Certainly, I'd say compared to the US, which has very high standards in research and they're federally funded researchers, that's sort of the benchmark for every other country. That people say that it's probably the level of supervision and oversight isn't, it's much more straightforward than here, I'd say. Would that be fair? But I wouldn't say it's a big difference. I think it's, and I couldn't, and I said, that's really more hearsay than.
Yes.
I couldn't point out.
Just your observations. In terms of the regulatory system, such as the use in New South Wales, that's been described as being to a rigorous standard, a high standard. Nevertheless, and once again on notice if you wish, are there some matters within that regulatory framework that you think almost invite some reflection by this committee? Because coming from this inquiry, we report with some recommendations. And as you know, those recommendations go back to government and government have six months to reflect and think about it and then provide a response. So we'll be challenged at the end of this, as we work through this, to develop recommendations. So I'm very interested to see what your thoughts might be about possible areas. Specifically on what we've covered today and with respect to your useful submissions. But, you know, in terms of the terms of reference of the inquiry, which is quite broad, any ideas that might have been sort of been thought about yourselves arising from being invited to come and give evidence?
I guess we've touched on that with our comments about enhancing support for activities to upgrade the three Rs, to contribute towards reducing the numbers of animals used and to start a coag conversation about how that could be done nationally. Again, we sort of need to bring everybody along broadly speaking together and COAG seems to be the way to do that. So that's, those are some of the things on the positive side. We equally shared a comment before, and you've just heard Philip's comment about the process for primate research approvals or Robert's elaboration from his period as an animal ethics committee chair. We can also stop this activity and, I mean, you would stop both the animal research activity, but you would also stop the medical research activity by regulating it in such red tape. So there's a pragmatic level of how do you actually enhance good outcomes, ensure good training, ensure good compliance, ensure good reporting and inspections and so forth. But in the same way, not to kill the system with bureaucracy and red tape.
I suppose what led to the question, Professor, was in fact, Professor Collins' comment about in the United States, there appears to be an assault upon the United States of theism over everything. But in terms of the regulatory system, perhaps greater efficiencies in the way in which the matters are dealt with and considered and worked through.
Yeah, I guess I'd have to take that particular, that on notice. I would say the thing I think that works well in the current system is that it's, it's like the public health system. It's deregulated to ethics committees that know the researchers, know the conditions, they know who does good research and who doesn't. They have to report to a government agency, the DPI, and there's auditing and inspection. But there is devolution of the regulations to where the work is being done. And I think that system works well in the current framework. I wouldn't say it takes a fair bit, it takes a fair bit of time to get through that whole process. And if you looked at ethics approval in general, even for clinical trials, if you ask researchers what the problem is, it's getting through all the bureaucracy to actually, you know, to strike a blow in anger, to use a paraphrase. Basically, that gets more and more onerous as each year goes by. So I think if you look at the framework we have, I think that's very good. And I think largely we have a very good system that caters for the welfare of the animals. And you'd have to put forward an argument why you felt additional regulation would improve that welfare.
Out of interest, in terms of research done, I mean, New South Wales obviously quite definitely is as much sized a state in terms of population and other factors. Is the work done in New South Wales? done in New South Wales so much greater than in other states, and if it is, or less greater, or whatever, or not, it couldn't be less greater, but obviously greater compared to other states? I mean, for example, Victoria, is much medical research done in Victoria, no?
Not much is done in Victoria.
Yeah, it's, well, it's sort of, that's their, they would say they're the number, they're the kingpins for medical research.
Okay.
They're killing themselves?
Then-
So New South Wales and the, what about the other states, just out of interest?
Well, Queensland's really on the up, and South Australia relative to its size, I mean, how many people live in South Australia, a million, million and a half, I suppose, it's.
Okay, but there is research undertaken across the Commonwealth.
Yeah, it's in a group of eight universities, if you went.
In fact, one of the major animal facilities is in Perth.
Yes, indeed.
It was just closed down, so it's closing down.
It is not going to close down.
It's not going to close down.
No, I missed it.
But it was under threat.
Well, we can update that.
It was, it was a real estate deal.
Yes.
Okay. Give a check.
Thank you. I'd like to talk a little bit about the rehoming of animals. I wonder what you thought, I mean, I look, if we could just put transgenic animals aside, and also put aside, you know, animals where it would be cruel to keep them alive at the end of research, obviously I understand they are a different category, and I know that the, has recently put out some guidelines to help research institutions to encourage them to rehome animals. Do you think that this is a good model, particularly for animals like cats and dogs, you know, should we be looking to assist in the rehoming in some way, or, you know, to get some of these research institutions to work with already established research, sorry, already established rescue organizations like the RSPCA, who are willing to take these animals in and find them homes?
I can tell you, there's, we only work with rodents, but we have an active, our animal ethics officer is organizing rehoming of rats to, after they're finished, you know, their participation in research, as you say, not genetically modified, that's, that's just not consistent regulations, but yeah, so that's something we're, at Garven facility there, definitely generating, so I can't tell you, I can't comment on dogs and cats because we don't use them.
We haven't worked, hasn't been dog or cat work done at our place in over more than 25 years.
So, and likewise at Neura, so I think this is a question you perhaps have to put to-
I guess my question is more, you know, do you support initiatives to rehome those animals? Do you think that that's a position we should be moving towards?
To the extent that is possible, yes.
Absolutely, we're doing it already, actually.
You only need to walk the streets of the community to see the success of some of the greyhound rehoming initiatives. I'm not sure of all of the ins and outs of numbers, but we certainly see it just in terms of greyhounds as pets now.
That's right. In your submission, you mentioned the need to get animal ethics approval, and we've talked about it quite a bit here. I asked one of the previous witnesses if they were surprised to hear that recently, an issue actually came to the Animal Research Review Panel, that animal research did take place with death as an endpoint without animal ethics approval, and that was investigated with no real consequences. Does that surprise you, that that's occurring, and that there's no real consequences of that when it does occur?
Yes, not surprises and distresses. We have a system which we put faith and confidence in, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe you need ministerial approval for a death-as endpoint experiment.
No, I think it's LD50, Andre's test of the ministerial approval.
All right, well, but LD50 is a death-as endpoint.
It's one of them, yes, yes.
Example, there may be, Robert, you may have a comment on death as an endpoint, but in general, you start off from the premise in your ethics submission, death as an endpoint is not an acceptable outcome because of the unreasonable suffering on the animal. Secondly, if, if that was the case, and obviously we're just relying on commentary at this point, not evidence, that feels to me like a matter for the department and the police to investigate.
So you think it should, it should have gone to the department and the police for all investigation, and if it was found, people were found to be guilty of that, that something under the act should have happened?
The research community is afforded a wide privilege by the Parliaments of Australia to enable the use of animals in research, and our obligation is to reciprocate by doing that when it is appropriate and justified, under approval, and adhering to the three Rs. So, you know, that's, that's the societal compact that we have. We in the research community have to both adhere to our side of that bargain, but also be willing to accept the consequences for deviation.
Thank you. I wanted to talk about the publication of negative results, or I don't know what the, what the expression is with the failed experiments, and what sort of, I guess, what the hurdles are to having transparency over those sorts of research results, that we don't duplicate.
There's a big move to pre-registration. It already happens as a mandatory issue for clinical trials, you need to say what trial's about, how you're going to do it, what your hypothesis is, and what you hope to see, and then that transparency of pre-registration means that people can go back afterwards and see if there were deviations and so forth. In the same way, there's also a move to the registration of other experimental work, animal work, for example, so that you've actually made that statement upfront. The previous witness referred to people making arbitrary decisions, a supervisor says, oh, those animals aren't giving the result, kill them all, that would be a very big red flag for the ethics committee in your annual reporting, because you've got permission to do a particular set of experiments, you have to report unexplained deaths, even a rodent dies, you have to stick it in the freezer so that a post-mortem can be done, so that's, that feels a little bit of hearsay going on without perhaps evidence. But certainly, experiments will be done that didn't produce the anticipated outcome, and you are correct that that probably, if you were looking for effect X and you saw nothing, probably that wouldn't be published because you saw nothing. And again, that's where the pre-registration of experiments becomes useful, because then there is at least an annotation of this particular investigation was done and no effect was seen, so that the knowledge is not lost.
I'll come to you as well, Professor Brink, I wanted to add to the question, which is basically, if that did happen, if there was a pre-registration of something similar to research you were about to do, how easy is it then to find out what the results of that research was? Do you support it being more transparent, I guess?
Sorry, can you just clarify that, pre-registration in terms of-
So-
The protocol, the experimental protocol, in the same way as you-
With the, with the committee.
Well, I guess the move has been to, in the same way as you register your clinical trial, with the clinical trials registry, US or the Australian, New Zealand one, and then you do your trial and so on and so forth, that people can go back and see what the protocol was. So there is a move to say, well, as you develop your ethics submission, you should also register what your particular study is, so that others can see that.
Okay, I'm sorry, I wasn't aware of that.
That's okay. I guess what's to prevent you doing the same experiment again?
Well, no, it's an excellent point. I mean, the, the main reason negative results don't get published is because, because you wouldn't get them accepted under most circumstances.
Yeah.
That's not to say unless, there are often negative results are published, as long as you, you know, you did an experiment, you thought this might be the case, you found it wasn't, you went and did a second experiment, because if this wasn't the case, then this may well be the case, and then you had a positive response, positive result to go along with it. Then those things tend to get published together, but the negative results on their own are very difficult to publish, and then unfortunately, the, for researchers to keep their jobs, they need to publish, and so that's, there's a big pressure there, that's the major one.
Are there competitive pressures as well, in terms of not wanting to publish the negative results in case it helps someone else to get to the same point?
I wouldn't have thought so, I think, you know, there's trying to get a move away from, you know, counting how many publications you've done to try and say what are the most impactful ones. I think Robert outlined some of the challenges, is where, where do you put, it has to be, the thing about things being published is that it's normally internationally peer-reviewed by people external to your organization, so that gives it a degree of rigor, and increasingly journals are asking for more and more background information, which they then put up in the cloud, which you have to include when you, especially good journals, when you get, put those publications forward, to spend a lot, so it depends, so with a negative result, if your hypothesis was you do this and this happens, and you started off and it didn't, you might then start to reassess, rather than go through the whole gamut of experiments, which you think is then going to be futile. So sometimes with negative results, you, you have the data, you've sort of changed tack some, if you're sensible, you'll have changed tack and gone down a different pathway, rather than just keep pursuing the negative, to a point that would then hit the scientific river, that then get published, but then wouldn't be in a particularly good journal, it'd take you quite a long time to publish. There's a lot of forces out there that makes that difficult to do. If there's someplace, there are places, what's the, I've forgotten the name, where you can put pre-publication things, where there's-
Bioarchive.
Bioarchive, so there are now becoming increasingly these archives where you can think, put data that's not been peer-reviewed, and you can say there, so there may be opportunities where that could go.
Thank you.
Chair, I was just going to suggest that, given that the government's questions have all been answered by the witnesses quite succinctly, that the government's time be ceded, and we just extend lunch a little bit, noting that you'll have some time after, but that just the government's share of time can be ceded to, just to permit the gentleman some extra time, and also, given that we have a shorter lunch break than we normally would, it might allow us to actually have a bit longer.
What about that, Minister, they won't mention it, so thank you. Professor Brink, in your submission, you make some comment on the third page, sorry, the, yes, the third page, second paragraph, about the concept of one health. It reads for itself, but I'm just wondering, and perhaps other professors, if you minded to do so, to elucidate on one health, and is that something which is on a trajectory going upwards, or it's just started, or what's the case? Or if you need to take it on notice, I don't mean to drop you in a-
I didn't individually write this report, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right, no, that's fine, take it on notice, it's not an ambush.
Thank you.
Not an ambush. Can I follow up with this question, which arises from a terms of reference about actual or potential public health risk, or risk to the public, from using laboratory animal species, and is, how does that rate, is it something to be concerned about, and the explanation you want to give?
The risk to the community of doing animal research in terms of an actual physical health risk is obviously very low. There are obviously equally legislative and society standards that we all adhere to and accept and respect, but the flip side is actually catastrophic. The risk to humans of something that could have been stopped and is not, will be people dying, people are maimed, and that's what we as medical researchers are trying to alleviate. So this is the tension of this particular area, which, you know, rightly attracts community concern and attention and focus, and we have to balance then the health and wellbeing of people with respect for animals used in medical research.
It's been put to us by a witness earlier on, that what is required in regards to dealing with this issue of animal welfare with respect to experimentation, is a paradigm shift, change in thinking about the way in which we have considered the use of animals in the past, and if we don't do that, the paradigm shift, so described, we're just going to continue on with what we're doing into the future, and who knows where it ends up, or how long it might take to sort of bring down those numbers to what might be judged to be a satisfactory level, whatever that might be defined as. I'm just wondering if you could care to comment about that, that in effect, we are on this track, so to speak, with the way in which animals are being used in experimentations for medical purposes, and that track is defined, and we're just going in the one direction, and we can't depart from that track, it's very fixed. Would you like to comment on that?
Certainly, thank you. I think that researchers are always looking, researchers' job is to innovate, to find new knowledge, so researchers are by definition always looking for new ways to answer the question. They start from a discovery perspective, the Nobel Prize example from earlier, and they move towards translating their research into improving human health and wellbeing, and there's a long continuum. So I think the suggestion that researchers are stuck, and all they want to do is just keep on doing what might have happened in the past, I don't think actually carries traction. As we've said, it's expensive, it's time-consuming, and if you could answer the question by computer modeling, people would have done that, or would do that, and so, as one particular example, hugely effective as knowledge has grown in drug discovery and development, reduces the number of compounds that actually end up at the back end of the testing process. So let my colleagues elaborate.
Yeah, I just think, as Peter said, that, you know, you've got the people who end up doing this and have done PhDs and post-docs, that they're sort of at the front end of innovation and lateral thinking, you have taken that part of society to do this. I think what has, what does happen is that things we didn't even dream of 10, 20 years ago comes up, and the obvious place to work out things is in these animal models, like there's now got these, these gene atlases where they're doing, they can now do the genetic makeup of each single cell, and then put that back in what that is in a complex organism. So all of a sudden, where you had a morass of genes and had trouble making sense of it, you can now put that there to each individual cell within something as complex as a kidney or an eye, and you just can't do that in humans. But when you get that information, you can transfer that across to the human condition, and it really opens a whole lot of, a new lot of research opportunities, well, not also therapeutic opportunities that didn't exist 10 or 20 years ago. So I think there's immense amount of innovation, and we're definitely not just doing what we did, it'd be sort of like saying that, you know, at the turn of the century on ships, they were doing surgery and chopping off limbs, but we're still doing surgery, but it's a lot different, they haven't done away with surgery. But what we're doing 20 years ago in surgery, and what we're doing now, is you couldn't have dreamed of, I mean, operations have just been overtaken, but then new operations come up, you've got robotics, it's just a whole changed field, and the same in medical research. We're still using animal research, it's just what we're doing now is completely different to what we did 20 years ago.
Yeah, and I think rather than a paradigm shift, I mean, there's a continual technological push, which is bringing new advances all the time, and Phil touched on one, was the ability to look at a whole bunch of single cells from an animal and actually get, be able to dive into each of those cells and just basically map every gene-derived molecule within each individual cell. Now, that's been something people have been jumping on, because this means, oh, we don't have to use like 20, 40 animals to get this information, we can look at a few and just get this massive information from just a couple of them, because we use this new technology. So people are looking to minimize the use of animals. we use this new technology. So people are looking to minimise the use of animals cost-wise, time-spent-wise, just the investment of time required as well. So I think there's an ongoing incentive for everyone to reduce animal use. And it's, I think that's something which will keep going. And I can't give you the data, but my experience is that we're using less and less animals all the time. And what we do the reason for, the impact is much higher than it used to be. So I see that as an ongoing trend, and I think a really encouraging one. Can I get, can I, oh, sorry, you want to follow up?
No, no, please.
No, I just want to go back to the one health thing, now that I see it. The person from government who wrote this is our Animal Welfare Officer, is a vet. And so he's got a particular interest in drugs which are given to like companion animals, et cetera. And so the point he was making is that a lot of the advances we make through animal research applies to humans, but also to veterinary practice as well. It's a lot of the same drugs, which if they work in a mouse and a human, for instance, they're also going to work across the spectrum. So that was the point there.
Just one, one quick one. With respect to research, or health research, medical research, use the term, with respect to the health, welfare and wellbeing of animals, non-human animals, is that undertaken on animals themselves, to advance medications and what have you, for improving the health, welfare and wellbeing of animals? In other words, there is in fact animal exploitation of animals for the benefit of animals happening?
Yes, in veterinary science, for example, in agricultural science, probably outside our-
No, 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 I just thought I'd raise it because it seemed to me that advances in what's being available to obviously treat animals in terms of various conditions, what have you, that obviously is arising from research, and that research presumably involves at least consideration of, you know, the work done with animals. Well, gentlemen, thank you very much, it's been most informative. I appreciate you all very missing, but you made the time available. There have been some questions on notice, and I suspect I've dropped a few questions, and I've been provided to you by the secretary. Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
From our witnesses, not all the members have returned yet from lunch, but they will be here shortly. And we'll just get through the formalities of having you sworn or affirmed, if that's okay. That'll take a bit of time, and by the time that they have returned, and they're coming in now, we can get underway. So once again, thank you for joining us this afternoon. Now, I'll need to be on my best game with the four witnesses, joining us by video. So I don't think I've had an occasion where all the multiple witnesses are joining us by video. So bear with me. But we welcome our four witnesses, and if I just go through the names for confirmation, we've got Miss Sarah Margot with us, welcome. Now, Miss Tara Ward, welcome.
Thank you.
Doctor Suzanne Fowler joins us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. And Doctor Di Evans, present? Great, thank you. Okay, so we'll just go through the formality, and what I'll do is, in that same order, because it'll be the easiest to follow, I'm just running down the list. I'll get to each of you, if you could please, to state your name, your position title, for the organisation you represent here this afternoon, and swear either an oath or an affirmation, whichever you prefer, the words of which should be, have been provided to you. If for some reason you've not received either the other affirmation wording, put your hand up, and we can provide that to you. So let's commence with Miss Margot.
Thank you. My name is Sarah Margot. I'm appearing as a solicitor for the Animal Defenders Office, and I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thanks, Miss Margot. Miss Ward?
Thank you. My name is Tara Ward. I'm also appearing as a solicitor for the Animal Defenders Office, and I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, Miss Ward. Doctor Fowler?
Doctor Suzanne Fowler, I'm the Chief Science Officer for RSPCA Australia, and I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, Doctor Fowler. And Doctor Evans?
Thank you. My name is Doctor Di Evans. I'm a Senior Scientific Officer with RSPCA Australia. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. Well, with that out of the way, and thank you for that, we can proceed to opening statements and questions. So just to remind members who've returned from lunch, just in case you made some phone calls over lunch, just to make sure your mobile phones set to silent. Now, in terms of the format, I invite each of the two organisations to make an opening statement. I presume each has decided who is going to do that. Once that's done, we'll then proceed with questions, if you're okay with that. We have representatives on this committee from the Opposition Governor Crossbench, and what we'll do is, we'll share the questioning around equally in the time we have available to us. Can I confirm that with respect to the Animal Defenders Office, we've received your submission, thank you very much. It's been received, processed and stands as submission number 245 to the inquiry, and has been uploaded to the inquiry's webpage. And with respect to the RSPCA, your submission has also been received, processed and now stands as a submission inquiry, and it's number 222, and has also been uploaded to the webpage. So with that brief coverage of the formalities and some other general points, I'll invite, would it be Miss Margot or Miss Ward, who's making the opening statement?
Thank you, Chair. I'll be making our opening statement this time.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you. On behalf of the Animal Defenders Office, thank you for the opportunity to provide evidence at today's hearing. This inquiry focuses on an incredibly important area of regulation, because it involves keeping many thousands of animals every year in cramped and artificial living conditions in New South Wales Medical Research and Breeding Institutions, and inflicting serious psychological and physical harm on them. Accountability and transparency in the animal medical research industry are minimal, to the point where it is questionable whether the industry can say it has a social licence to do what it does. Time and again, we speak to members of our community who have no idea that animals are used for research in Australia. They think it does not happen here, that it was something that happened in the distant past, but not anymore. They have wrongly assumed that we and science itself have progressed, moved beyond such antiquated methods. At the Animal Defenders Office, we believe that this is achievable, with the right incentives, including government funding and industry support. Research institutions can wean themselves off these antiquated scientific procedures without diminishing outcomes for human health. Human health outcomes could in fact be optimised by embracing alternatives to animal testing. To help realise this civilised and humane objective, we would urge the New South Wales Government to commit to improving transparency by requiring increased public reporting about animals used in medical research, and to supporting the development of non-animal alternatives. Ideally, the latter would be overseen by a state institution for the advancement of non-animal alternatives and technologies in New South Wales. With these initiatives, New South Wales would be following international jurisdictions such as the EU, the UK and the US, rather than be left behind using techniques that hark back to vivisection in the 1600s, when animals were regarded as nothing more than machines. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now proceed to the RSPCA, and who will be making that opening statement, I ask?
That'll be myself, thank you.
Please proceed.
Thank you. I would like to thank the inquiry on behalf of RSPCA New South Wales and RSPCA Australia for the opportunity to present today. I believe it was Doctor Grace Hopper, who was a famous computer scientist, who once stated, "The most dangerous phrase in the English language is, 'We have always done it this way.' The research world is full of firsts. In fact, change and progress are integral to its very existence, and yet there is a lack of momentum and incentive for researchers to move away from the way that's always been done, especially when it comes to using animals for medical research. A significant culture shift is needed to make change happen, and we need to move forward and recognise that there may be a better way, to use less animals, refine that mix and respect the animal's right to a worse, fair life for a living. We know with some positivity that many submissions and the discussions earlier today have supported similar initiatives to those suggested by the RSPCA, and believe that there is an opportunity for change within the research community. A significant process has been made in the EU, UK and the USA in replacing the use of animals in research and regulatory testing. The RSPCA has strongly advocated for many years for the establishment of a national centre for the development and implementation of non-animal alternatives and supporting research in the three hours. The RSPCA also has a longstanding position that transparency and accountability are integral to ensuring long-term positive animal welfare outcomes and improvements. The RSPCA supports the development of openness ingredients that entail the why and how animals are used in research. Related to this need for transparency and accountability, the RSPCA supports the timely publication of animal use statistics, which includes outcomes for projects and studies, including those which are not published or which do not achieve the stated objectives. A common international concern at present relates to the reproducibility and translatability of research outcomes. In our submission, the RSPCA has identified a number of areas where improvements could be made to ensure animals are not used unnecessarily, to ensure that where animals are appropriately justified to be used, the results are scientifically robust and truly do contribute to advancements in medical research. A few areas we have suggested include rigorous peer review for proposed research studies, priority submissions to be out of work ethically to ensure scientific robustness, mandatory compliance with the arrived 2.0 guidelines, which provide a clear outline for the reportable features of any biomedical research programme to ensure reproducibility can be achieved, and encourage researchers to review common factors that can affect research outcomes, and the review of high-impact studies such as forced swim tests and inhalation studies in terms of justification for their continued use. To achieve these improvements and to make positive improvements in animal welfare outcomes requires investment. In addition to the resourcing we identified in our submission, further investment could be centred on appropriate resourcing of animal research facilities to ensure they provide the highest standards of animal care, improved housing management and handling of research animals to meet species-specific physical and behavioural needs, the development of regulation based on compulsory standards under animal welfare legislations that is species-specific, and the stronger focus on staff training to ensure that all staff are competent in all procedures conducted, and that appropriate records are maintained to demonstrate this. The RSPCA acknowledges the importance of the current regulatory framework in helping to safeguard the welfare of animals used in research, but can also identify several areas for improvement, both in New South Wales and Australia-wide. We recognise the importance of the ARRP and the requirement for reporting within the New South Wales framework. However, we do believe it is essential that there is an ongoing commitment by government and the research sector to reduce reliance on the use of animals, increase transparency and accountability, and to ensure that only the highest standards of animal care and welfare are achieved. Without this, there is likely to be increased questioning and mistrust by the public, which will affect its social licence.
Thank you very much. Well, it's great, the opening statements sit nicely with the submissions, and that provides us with much material to ask you questions about. So commence with Deputy Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. I've got my first question for the Animal Defenders Office, and to either one of you that may want to answer this. But a concern that we've heard this morning was that whistleblowers within the industry often don't speak out, they don't go public or speak out against it. Does our legislation support whistleblowers in this industry if they did have concerns, or does our legislation actually gag whistleblowers from within the industry in animal research?
Perhaps I can start with this, and then defer to Tara to continue. Thank you for the question, Deputy.
So we're looking directly at the Animal Research Act. There's a provision in section 56 referring to the disclosure of information. The way this is presented, in our legal opinion, actually stumps any efforts to for whistleblowers, and doesn't offer any kind of protection for someone who should wish to disclose some kind of contribution under the act. It does have exemptions provided for in that section, however, they are particularly limited, and it's essentially, in a basic reading of it, you could, as a whistleblower, you could have no confidence that you'd be protected by the act itself. There are some legal mechanisms that operate outside of the Animal Research Act itself. However, we, these are very complicated, they don't guarantee protection, such as the Disclosure Act, which I might refer to Tara to mention now.
Thank you. So, yes, that would be the Public Interest Disclosures Act of New South Wales from 1994. And while that exists and does potentially cover universities, they may be regarded as public authorities, they typically, it typically protects disclosures made by public officials about corrupt conduct, so sort of maladministration or sort of corruption in the sort of carrying out of public duties, and made to an investigating authority. So once again, the, any sort of guarantee that a whistleblower would be protected, and of course, depending on where that whistleblower is coming from, yeah, is quite a complex sort of legal question.
And is that something that this committee should really review, if we're talking about animal protection? Should we be reviewing that to ensure that if somebody did want to come forward with information inside these research facilities, especially given a lot of these industries that have come in this morning have said that there is transparency, that there's no issues with transparency. But if we've got potentially legislation that gags anyone from within the industry speaking out, is that something we should review?
Yes, absolutely. I think it's imperative that we have legislative protection for whistleblowers, especially in an industry like this, where a concern's using sentient animals in procedures that we know cause harm and suffering. And also considering that any attempt to come forward by a whistleblower is impeded by factors outside of the legislation as well. I mean, in terms of peer pressure from people you work with, questions about job security, excuse me, your reputation within the industry, there are a lot of factors that would disincentify someone from speaking up. So short of having clear legal protection, I think it's safe to say that some people would not be willing to risk their risk coming forward.
This is a question for both the RSPCA and the ADO. We've had a lot of submissions about two experiments, and a lot of submissions suggesting that one of the recommendations they'd like to see from this inquiry is a ban on the, on two particular experiments, which is forced swim tests and smoking models used in research, particularly nose-only smoking model testing. What would you like to see as recommendations from this inquiry, and why, and what are the welfare implications for animals or the scientific validity questions around those experiments?
From the RSPCA's perspective, we think there is a significant lack of justification to be using these experiments, given the very high impact they have on the welfare of animals. We know that, for instance, with the nose-only smoking model, not only is the animal, in most cases a mouse, being exposed to smoke being forced into its lungs, but there's also the feeling of not being able to escape the environment, so the ongoing distress of that, and the fact that they're repeatedly exposed to that day after day, generally five days a week, Monday to Friday, because that's what's convenient for the research student. And so straight away, it's committing to the research student or the research paradigm, but not necessarily committing for the animal, and so that's not taken into consideration, you know.
Sorry, Miss Fowler, sorry, can I just interrupt? So what happens if an animal is addicted to nicotine? What happened, you said five days a week, what happens on the two days where the animal is not being smoked? Are they experiencing a come down from that nicotine addiction?
I can't comment on that, unfortunately. I'm not quite across that side of the science. But we do know with this journal, Monday to Friday, that these experiments are right, and then the following weekends come again. So I'm not too sure about the implications of that with nicotine addiction. But we strongly suggest that these models are not justified in most circumstances. And, you know, we highly recommend that there should be special provisions if you're going to do such high-impact studies, that there needs to be a very, very clear justification, rather than, as I said in my opening statement, that's the way it's always been done. I think there's much more modern methodologies that could be done these days, and also already significant evidence that we know that smoking causes cancer, and whether or not- and whether or not these animal models are truly translatable to the human condition is questionable.
Thank you. ADO, do you have anything to add to that? Either for the smoking model or for the forced swim tests as well?
Yes, yes, we do. We can't, as the Canadian Legal Centre, we can't really comment on the scientific research other than what we can read and what's available. But from a legal perspective, it is interesting to us that other companies become suitable companies voluntarily moving away from using these kinds of tests. And so you're treated in other parts of the world where these are no longer accepted or considered necessary or justifiable. With that as a standard for best practice, we think it makes perfect sense to follow in the process of that kind of precedent. And that same voluntary commitment is being made by various selection of universities in Australia.
Thank you. I want to talk about a case study that was mentioned by the ADO in your submission about someone that was attempting to get animals out at the end of an experiment just simply to rehome them, and the facility would not release the animals for rehoming. Can you give us some information as to what the issue was there? You mentioned that the DPI was being very difficult and wouldn't be transparent to allow those animals to come out. Can we just get some more details around the issues you were having with the DPI and the reasons given by the research institution as to why they wouldn't release those animals for rehoming?
Thank you, Deputy Chair. Of course, I'm conscious of confidentiality issues, but I know that this inquiry probably trunks those anyway, but I should respect both. So basically, that was a situation where some animal, not even animal advocates, some members of the public were very concerned to try to rescue some animals who were being used in, or as, I think the term is, control group for testing a vaccine used on animals of their species. So these were animals who had survived the research and had not been affected or injected etcetera with the substance being tested. So they were eminently, from that perspective, they were eminently suitable to being released. However, the members of the public went through every step and process that they should have gone through. They consulted with the researcher, they consulted with the institution, they presented their evidence, they really put a solid case for why these few animals could be saved. At the end of the project, it wasn't about disrupting any research project, and yet that was refused. And so it went to the Animal Research Review Panel, and that was refused again. And so that's why, as a last resort, it was taken to the New South Wales Civil and Administrative Tribunal to try to get a sort of objective review of those decisions. And it was there that we couldn't even get past the first step because at that point, the DPI and in amongst the whole process, which took a long time, the DPI was involved, as well as those other entities. And it was only at the point where the tribunal, that the DPI announced that it was a different project because they had never provided the original project or protocol number and there was now a different project or protocol number. It was something as basic and as fundamental as that that had never been disclosed to the members of the public. The members of the public could never have known that without it being disclosed to them. It would have taken a line in one of the very many pages of correspondence about this whole issue. And to have it put forward at that point and then used as an argument that the tribunal did not have jurisdiction to hear the matter, which we argued against and were partially successful, but ultimately the case had to be dismissed on that ground. So it couldn't even get to the first phase of argument, substantive argument. And that was because the DPI presented at that moment a crucial bit of information it had withheld up until that point. And in my view, that is going against every principle of being a model litigate and also being a fair and objective regulator in this space.
Thank you, and good afternoon to all of you. Could I start with the RSPCA, with Dr Fowler and Dr Evans? In your submission, you talk about the need for pre-registration of animal studies on a central database in order to sort of counter this problem, I guess, that we were discussing with previous witnesses about not publishing negative findings. Could you talk to that recommendation? And explain, I guess, why in your view you think that there is, I guess, such... Is it reluctance in relation to publishing negative findings? Or is there simply no procedure sort of available for people to publish those findings?
From our perspective, it's a multifactorial. There is no incentive to publish negative findings at the moment. And in fact, even as alluded to by previous people today, it's almost a disincentive because to publish something that's negative is seen as a negative on your career and generally doesn't hit high-impact peer-reviewed journals. And so it's not considered a peer study. And as a result, they don't want to waste their time, for want of a better term, to spend time publishing negative results. So I think that's one problem. The other part, I guess, the reasoning behind suggesting pre-registration is along the lines of human clinical trials. Before there was pre-registration of those, there was no faith thing of what had been trialled in humans and then trying to stop that being reproduced elsewhere in the world or by another researcher. And so the pre-registration of human clinical trials was made to try and limit that reproduction of previous results and lack a waste of time and investment. And so we believe that pre-registration of animal studies would have a similar positive impact in that it forces something, one, to commit to what their statistical model and the experimental models would look like, so that they can't then change the way they interpret the data after the study has been completed. But two, also to reduce the chance of someone else trying to reproduce that for the same study and get the same results and waste that on further animal lives.
Thank you. Are there other jurisdictions that provide for that sort of central database to publish? That, you know, to pre-register the animal studies? Or would this be something that we would be setting new ground?
There's nothing else in Australia. There is a German centre, a German website that anyone in the world can register their studies on. And I believe there's another one that has run out of somewhere in the EU, maybe Norway or Netherlands, I'm not 100% sure on that. But I hope that in our submission, we reference the German link. And that's available in English. And as I said, it's for international people to pre-register. But there's no requirement for it. It's not mandatory as far as I'm aware. It's just there is a, should you wish to do so. And it walks through having a good experimental design as well. As I said, I think that's really important for research to be committed to the experimental design at the start, at the outset, to ensure that that's being followed through, to ensure good statistical modelling through the interpretation of the data.
And can you anticipate any, I guess, sort of commercial competition issues in that? Is there some... Is there any sort of need for, or perceived need to keep those sorts of research results confidential so as not to, I guess, assist your competitor with their own studies?
My understanding is that it can go, I can't remember the term, but be confidential for up to five years, at which time you then can commit to releasing it. And so it becomes a lot of money after five years. So you do get that period of time where it's kept confidential to allow you to progress any confidential matter. And so that deals with that risk, I guess, that commercial component.
So to the extent that two different companies were trying to research the same sort of issue, it's possible then that even with a pre-registration of a particular study using animals, you would still get a duplication in that study by, I guess, another research team trying to do it quicker?
Correct. I guess what would happen if, you know, we intend that what should happen is negative results. You should be able to choose to publish the findings sooner to try and avoid that situation. But yes, if we're both kept confidential for the same period of time, it would still be that risk, absolutely.
Thank you. One of the other things that you touch on in your submission, which we don't hear a lot about in these, in any of the sort of animal welfare-related inquiries that we've sat on, which there are many in this parliament, and that's the issues in relation to workforce and, I guess, the impact that the usage of animals as a product can have on employees. Do you have any insight into the, I guess, the turnover rates of staff within medical research facilities? Or any insight you can share on the sort of mental health impacts on employees?
I do have experience in the medical research field. So I did work in the field for a fair while and managed a number of staff who did suffer from compassion fatigue, unfortunately, which comes as a result of caring for animals for a long period. Most people who work in this field are very committed and love animals and they'll work in this field because they do love animals. And unfortunately, having to euthanise large numbers of animals is a requirement of the role. And so that can lead to a touch of personal values and subsequent mental health challenges. And it is a very much a growing area that is being well recognised by most research institutes and universities. And they are getting a lot better at providing support. There's a wellbeing initiative within some of the national bodies to try and support staff and talk more openly about the need for wellbeing and the access to things like employee assistance programmes for people to talk through the challenges that they're facing and things like that. And I think that's a really important part of recognising the challenges of working with this industry.
Thank you.
Can I just make a...
Yes, please do.
Well, I think this is why replacing animals is so essential. It's not just about reducing the numbers and reducing impacts on animals, but there's also the benefit for people as well. So you take animals out of the equation and you increase your uptake of alternatives. It resolves a lot of issues.
Thank you. Ms Ward, in your opening statement, I think you referred to the sort of inertia within the, or potential inertia within the medical research industry in relation to changing the way that we do things. Do you think that stronger regulation or government funding is required in order to sort of, or both, in order to push along the development of better alternatives to using animals?
Thank you. Yes, I would agree that both, the more, the better in terms of incentives. So it could be achieved... I think the problem is from, and I have experienced two on a personal level as a category C, so I think it's the right category, the animal welfare category on a animal ethics committee. And I think it's fair to say that at least from that experience, the status quo is absolutely entrenched. There's just very little, very little evidence of sort of moving beyond that. So extra little incentives are required. Now, that could be as little as, you know, changing the way sort of protocol forms are drafted to force researchers to give any, you know, more than just standard words. Oh, you know, we have to use animal models now because there's no alternative, but we're monitoring the literature. The problem is, of course, that if everybody says that, nobody's going to be looking into moving beyond that. So it could be requiring, I think in our submission, we suggested changes to the legislation, even going with the animal research act as it is now. We know that that's all been sort of reviewed and maybe sort of merged into a broad animal welfare act. So we suggested changes that, again, would just sort of force researchers to turn their minds to it and put them, you know, make them deal with the issue more than just ticking a box and standard, sort of standard words in their response. So otherwise, from my humble, especially from experience, I can't see that really it's going to change.
Thank you. We'll move now to the questioning from government members. The Honourable Westen.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to the four witnesses who have made themselves available to appear today and provide your submissions and some answers to the inquiry. Ms Ward, I wanted to start with you. I was noting in your opening submission that you indicated that the ADO supports non-animal alternatives in testing. We've heard today that there really aren't suitable non-animal testing tests to achieve the results that the researchers are able to do with animals. Are you able to provide us with some examples where non-animal testing can actually do that?
Do what, sorry?
A substitute for animal testing in research.
So I think it's my colleague, Ms Margot, said so. We're solicitors, we're not scientists, we're not researchers. What we would point to, though, is evidence from other jurisdictions that are moving towards, and so much further along this path than we seem to be here in Australia, towards non-animal alternatives.
I understand, obviously, that position that, you know, we're solicitors, we're not researchers. But you've put forward a proposition, which we've heard evidence today from researchers who said that their research cannot be achieved through non-animal means. You've, the proposition that you've put forward is that you don't support that. I'm asking, in the research that you have done to support that position, what testing have you been able to identify that can replace the tests that are currently done using animals?
So I would direct the committee to experts in this area. It could be experts in, I think some of the other submissions pointed to that there just is so sort of relatively little work in this space here in Australia that we don't have that ready expertise. But there are experts out there. I would certainly defer to them. I think this is also the problem, that we're getting this review that there are no sort of alternatives from researchers. And this is what I alluded to before, that researchers have developed their career in using animals. That they are, I can't get across to you how enough, from a layperson's perspective, how entrenched this is, that they just cannot, and because their careers are staked on this, they cannot see beyond that or won't, or there's just no incentive for them to do that. What they're doing is, they have been able to build a career on that. And so where's the motivation to move beyond that? Which I would maintain from an ethical perspective, we need to do.
I'm... You can. I just wanted to, I'll come to you with some further questions in a second, Ms Margot. But I just wanted to keep addressing Ms Ward for a moment. The issue that we've got here is that you say, ask the researchers. Well, we've just had three of the most preeminent researchers in the state come and give testimony and say that what you're proposing is not feasible. Now, we have done exactly the things that you have asked this committee to do. The evidence is that it is not achievable. Now, I haven't finished, I haven't finished yet, Ms Ward. I haven't finished yet. Ms Ward, you cannot...
Hold on. We just need one person talking at a time. I think the member's asking a question, getting the question.
Yeah, thank you. Now, Ms Ward, in the event that you say that non-animal alternatives are to be supported, does your office support the use of animal testing where human life is at risk and there is no alternative to animal testing other than that to occur?
So from our perspective, this is all about where we draw the line. As the human society, where do we draw the line? Now, I could sort of reverse that or flip that question and say we could get to where the human health outcomes that we want or that we consider to be achievable if we could experiment on humans. Now, rightly, we don't do that for ethical reasons. Now, rightly, we don't do that for ethical reasons. We are prepared to do without those quick and probably much more appropriate advancements by choosing not to conduct that kind of experimentation. For many who are concerned about the use of sentient animals who have not consented to this kind of experimentation, there are serious ethical concerns about this that are not justified and cannot be justified from a sort of utilitarian balancing act. So so I would maintain that just as we draw the line and wouldn't experiment on humans in that situation, even if it guaranteed a quicker and better outcome, I would say that we don't experiment on any sentient creature where we have not got their consent. If we have their consent, that is fine. The ethical issues, a lot of the ethical issues are resolved. And if we adopted that as a society, you would find that we would have the alternatives, you know, sort of a plethora of alternatives. That would enable us to make those human health or achieve those human health outcomes.
In that instance then, Ms Ward, I'm going to, I guess, presume that that answer meant that under no circumstances would your organisation support animal testing? Is that, would that be a fair assumption?
No, I think we have a model already for where the use of sentient creatures who can't give their consent. And that is where humans are used, so where research is conducted on humans who can't give their consent. So we're talking about minors or people who otherwise are mentally incompetent, et cetera. And there is a model out there, there are guidelines, et cetera, for conducting research on those humans. And we would say that is a perfect model where conducting research on any sentient creature who can't give their consent could be used. And I think research is conducted in those circumstances on humans. So it's not to say that, oh, it just wouldn't happen, it does happen. And that is a perfectly good model that is already in use.
I don't know what to do with that answer, so I'm just going to let that one go and go to my next point, which is, is it not a little bit disingenuous to have, in your submission, a raft of suggestions, recommendations, ideas to change the way with which we conduct animal experimentation, given that, in effect, your organisation doesn't support it?
No, because we're realistic. And I think this is one of those sort of attempts to, I mean, animal advocates are always trying to be caught out by saying, oh, you want to ban something overnight. I think we're certainly not suggesting that. We acknowledge that the use of animals is entrenched. We also acknowledge that it has produced positive human health outcomes. We're certainly not denying that. But what we are proposing is that we keep as a firm, humane and ethical objective that we phase it out and that the necessary steps to transition from this, let's face it, antiquated techniques are ultimately phased out. And we not replace it with nothing, but we develop those alternatives that are out there, that the literature tells us, and are being used and are being validated.
Do you understand community concerns that you're effectively trying to have your cake and eat it too? In that you have a position that we should ban it, but then you, at the same time, have just effectively indicated that you accept that it's going to happen? I can't reconcile those two positions with with your submission and your answers. What is it that you accept is a threshold with which animal testing for medical purposes is permitted and where it is not?
So, thank you for the question and welcome to our world as animal advocates. This is a common ethical dilemma that we face on a daily basis. As animal advocates, we may be ultimately wanting to achieve the end to practices, harmful practices involving animals. But there is a big spectrum as to where you position yourselves as to how you're going to get there. So we, as a legal organisation, we're inherently conservative or cautious. And we acknowledge that we are not going to get there overnight.
Conservative is probably not the word I would have used.
How we can get there, that ethical objective, how we can reach that ethical objective in a realistic way. And we're not saying that we have all the answers, far from it. This is, as I say, a dilemma we deal with on a daily basis. But we are proposing that we can get there. Other jurisdictions have adopted that as their explicit objective and that New South Wales should be doing likewise.
In turn, what my colleague has said, I'd just like to say that I think this harks back what echoes what's been mentioned already in today's hearing, that we really need this culture shift and attitude change whereby many jurisdictions overseas have already accepted that alternatives is the way of the future, regardless of how long it takes us to get there. And in terms of moving towards that, what we need to see in New South Wales is investment and dedication and funding in alternative space. So back in the late nineteen eighties, we had a Commonwealth Senate Inquiry into Animal Experimentation. And the recommendations of the committee in that specific inquiry were that we need to have dedicated funding for alternatives and a sense of that effect. I mean, that was in the late eighties, over thirty years ago, and we haven't seen that kind of funding to date. I think the sooner we start committing funding and embracing this industry, which really has potential, incredible potential, and I think would be very exciting, would be economically interesting, providing new technologies and workforce. As soon as we embrace this avenue and move towards that, the sooner we're going to have alternatives available. And I think ultimately, replacing animals in research, if it's something that's mainly available today, it's certainly something that seems to align with what's been said by everyone who's appeared today. Those who work in this space have acknowledged how positive it is where animals can be replaced. And I think it's not a point of, that really essentially, there's not a real reason to resist shifting towards alternatives. And that's the direction that other jurisdictions overseas are taking. And it has a lot of potential economically, socially, scientifically and ethically.
I could not concur more. However, what we've heard today in evidence has been clear from not only the researchers and scientists who have appeared, but also advocates like yourselves, that while the, the idea, the notion that in the future we may be able to move in that direction, we're not there yet. We are not in the position at the moment to be able to achieve things like a COVID vaccine in a timeframe which has saved millions of people across the world because of its earlier deployment due to the testing regime which was employed on it. Yet, I'm unsure as to what it is that you are hoping is progressed here because all the evidence was, was that that's what these researchers wanted to do. They wanted to get to the point where they were able to do this without the need for animal testing, but we are not there yet. So in that instance, do you accept that at the moment we are not there yet? That we require animal testing, that things like the COVID vaccine would not have been delivered in the timeframe it was without animal testing, and that it has saved millions of lives? Anybody, anybody can answer that one?
Sure, thank you, thanks for the question. I would say that if alternatives aren't available immediately, then that is incumbent upon the government to make sure that alternatives are invested in so that they are available as soon as possible. I don't think that we can use that premise that the vaccine, which was developed with both animal and animal methods, sets the precedent for how we go forward with this. And I think that phasing out and working towards a different reality of testing is not at all, is not, is not at odds with how we currently operate. We can absolutely move towards producing our reliance on animals, regardless of the status quo right now in today's.
The issue is that it's the lack of the technology. So while we can send somebody to the moon, because we've done it before, we can't send somebody to the sun. Okay, so in the same way, we can't, no matter, I don't think any amount of government money would would make us be able to research medicine or a treatment that would substitute for animal testing, because that technology doesn't exist. That's the evidence we heard today, it just does not exist. So I don't think it's a failure of government, I think it's a failure of understanding of the limitations of science. And then that's where I have this great concern about the position that you're taking. But I noticed the time had expired, so I'll offer it to the Chair back to pass the questioning on.
Thank you, and thank you all for joining us this afternoon. The question has been posed, or the statement's been made about the need for a significant culture shift. And a witness earlier today used analogous language about the equra, a paradigm shift in the way in which we think about animal experimentation. A counterpoint position, if we describe it that way, put by some of the researchers that gave evidence earlier today, was that, in fact, the nature of medical science is that it is actually continually, in terms of research, is continually evolving. And from their point of view, and I presume that they're put in the position as they firmly believe, they do wish to move away from animal experimentation as far as they can, as quickly as they can. But there doesn't seem to be any attempt by them to say they don't want to proceed down that track. So the point I'm making is that, in a sense, are we not seeing a shift take place in the way in which we're looking at this, and particularly with the advent of of technology? And I'm talking about, you know, raw computing technology, and I presume in the relatively near future, quantum computing technology, which will enable research methodologies and modelling to be done at levels we don't possibly grasp. But at least for the time being, until we can get to this point of substitution, and I think this is what's being argued by ourselves, that we should be able to substitute to non-animal research experimentation, we still do in fact rely and need to rely on animals to progress research in important areas of health and science. So I'm struggling to.
Sorry.
Yeah.
I might have to make a comment on that, because I think it builds on the last topic as well, that Tara was speaking to. Is that, yes, we acknowledge that animals are absolutely necessary at the moment, it's certainly possible. The problem is there is a very sincere lack of incentive for, as several researchers you spoke to earlier today, to work out is there truly an alternative in this? So they might go, can I do this immune study without using an animal? And they go, well, no, it's an immune study, I need the entire animal to be able to do this. And therefore, that's my answer on the ethics form, and that's how I'm going to proceed. At the moment, there is no incentive for us to say to a researcher, actually, you know, there's this new study that was done overseas where it is possible, and I'd like you to do a parallel study that uses the animals and uses this new methodology and see if you can get the same results or the same amount of data out of this. Because at the moment, their funding is given to them by the MHMSI to do an animal model based on their years of experience, is based on, as Ms Ward alluded to, there is a real lack of incentive for them to change what their entire career has been based on, because they get very limited funding, again, that was acknowledged by the researchers earlier today, and that they have to use that very cautiously so that make sure that they do what they know they can do and what they've published on before, so they can do it on prior knowledge, which makes a lot of sense. But unfortunately, that means that there's no look beyond their blinkers to sort of say, actually, over here, maybe I could do a systematic review, or maybe I could invest in big data to look at very large cohorts of human data to see if there's results I could get there, because there's no incentive. And they don't get funding to do that type of work. And there's not really, in Australia, a culture to go, you know what, there might be a better way. Maybe there's a better way. And I think that's the culture change that we're all referring to, is that we need a big push and a big incentive and a massive job for this industry to go, you know what, that's not, we can't keep doing it that way. And maybe I need to do a parallel study, which still might use animals, but I could validate over here that organology technology or microorganoids and those sorts of things could get me similar results or could give me the same building blocks to build on. But that's always very costly.
Sure.
You get a thousand dollars to do an experiment, and that's, it's a lot more money than that, that's just user error figure. You get a finger on what you know and what you've built your career on, you're not going to go over here and divulge.
Well, I mean, that's your assertion, but it strikes me that the witnesses we've seen today and others that have provided submissions from their respective organisations don't strike me as particularly parochial or narrow minded in terms of the way in which they're looking to try and advance their research. I mean, the world and science is connected instantly these days. And these researchers, you know, obviously are aware of research that's being done elsewhere in the world, similar to or perhaps even identical to what they're doing. I mean, you're surely not submitting that that these researchers here are relying on animal research as a way of advancing medical science, because that just seems to be the easiest way to proceed in Australia. Is that your submission?
I think that oversimplifies my argument. I think what I'm saying, and I'm certainly not speaking to the three researchers that you had on the panel, I don't know them and I haven't read their ethics applications, and I'm not sure of what process they've gone through to determine why they need to use animals for their particular research. From my experience and my knowledge, I think there is a, it's very difficult to get some research group into their way of thinking and to alter their research pathway once they've made a commitment to a certain way of working, which is using animals.
Okay, can I put this back to you, that, I mean, and sort of back and forth questioning. I mean, these three researchers who gave a panel presentation this morning, and there was one earlier who gave evidence by himself, are quite well known and are quite eminent, you know, medical health research people in Australia, particularly in New South Wales. Now, if you're not familiar with their work, and you're not familiar with the way in which they go about undertaking research themselves and supervised research, I mean, you're hardly in a position to make a generalised statement about the way in which they're conducting their research, are you?
I think I just clarified, I'm not talking about those three individual researchers or the one that you had on earlier today. I'm talking about more of a culture of change that I think's needed in the Australian industry. But Diane, can you hand up to that?
Yeah, if I could just add another comment through the Chair. It's not just the purest research that's being done that creates these, I guess, not obstacles as such, but difficulties in changing the pathway, but it's also the regulatory testing. So what we find quite often, even if you have a desire by researchers to want to opt out using animals, they can't get products registered for human use in particular, but it's the same for animals without having that base animal testing as well. So it's really important that we look at both streams simultaneously so that they can come together and go forward together, otherwise they're out of sync. And I have been involved in looking at the regulatory side, mainly for ingredients used in cosmetic testing. And that's a good start. So, you know, this is the other part of the whole landscape that we do need to consider in order to progress this. So it's not just saying that the researchers are maybe unable to go forward. There's the government regulatory requirements as well for being able to register different therapeutics.
Well, I understand the answer to that, but I mean, in an earlier statement it was made, and I don't know whether it was a throwaway line, but with respect to these eminent researchers, and I don't think specifically the ones in the room, but medical research in general, that they've built their careers. uh that they've built their careers on this. In other words, this is all they know. They know nothing different. And the implication is that they're slavishly, you know, following what's been done in the past. In fact, you know, the, the language that's been used is, is antiquated research methods. Now, I have to say with the greatest respect, the description of what we got this morning from a total of four quite eminent researchers is it certainly can't be construed at all that the research methods that they are using are antiquated. In fact, it strikes, strikes me, speak for itself only, that it's quite cutting edge.
And I think you'll find that there's quite a continuum and I know there has been a discussion about the continuum today on where different researchers are with that progression. And I think there's different types of research. I guess the point I was trying to make is not about individual researchers. It's much more about the system in Australia does not support even those who do want to perhaps consider uh alternative methods. There is a significant lack of funding and so much competitiveness in trying to get research funding that they can't necessarily get their hands on alternative methods even if they wanted to. Both for the lack of funding and also because of the regulatory requirements, as Di had said. And so there's, there's a significant lack of incentives. And I think that um you'll find that the NHMRC did a review a number of years ago, I can't remember when, this was apparently about the, the potential blockers and enablers of, in, in using the three Rs. And lack of funding was a significant part of it. And also trying to control your research so that you can build on previous research was another, was another potential blocker. And so that, that's my point is that I really think for change to happen, there needs to be significant investments in making sure that people feel that they can go down this path of looking at alternatives. And not just alternatives. I also think there's blocks for trying to do refinement because if you try and say to someone, I'd like you to use, you know, that, that there's a pain relief that you could use to make sure that the research is not such a high impact to the animal, they need to validate that, that that pain relief is not going to change their results. And so they need to do a side-by-side study. That's going to cost them more money with a limited grant, uh limited access to grant funds. And so to make these sorts of change happen, you need to give incentives to re-acceptors.
Thanks, thanks Dr Fowler. Well, at times, witness, it's just gone quarter past, we do need to, to move to our next witness. But uh can I just, on behalf of the committee, thank you all very, very much. Uh first of all, for the, the very comprehensive submissions, which contain not just a lot of detail but are well annotated for a lot of referencing that can be done. Uh and thank you for your frankness with your evidence today. Appreciate it very much. Um there may well be uh some uh supplementary questions, I expect, that will arise once members have had a chance to read hand side. Uh and if you're agreeable, our committee secretariat will liaise with you over the supplementary questions uh and to organise a timeframe, usually about 21 days to return those supplementary questions in due course. So once again, thank you for making your time available. Thank you. Uh good afternoon. Welcome, uh Ms Craig, welcome to our inquiry. Get through the formality first, um which is the formal swearing or affirming of you in as the witness. And then I'll just give an overview of, of how we intend to proceed and, and enable you to um understand what we want to get through over the next forty-five minutes or so. So um if I could um ask you please to um identify your name, your position title on where you are, uh in terms of what you, who you're representing today, uh and swear either an oath or an affirmation, um which, whichever you prefer, uh the words of which you should have a copy of, and if not, uh put your hand up. Uh sorry, I should correct myself immediately. You, you're appearing as a private individual this afternoon. So I apologise for that. You're not representing an organisation. So with that clarification, um I'll pass it over to you. Just your, your, your name and swear either an oath or an affirmation.
My name is Lisa Craig. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. Now, just before we proceed, Ms Craig, just to confirm, um we, we have two submissions from you. If you were, you, oh sorry, rather one in an original form and a part A. Uh now with respect to the um, the uh original one, that's submission number two hundred and fifty-one to the inquiry. Uh it's, it's titled, that's its number.
Yes, I have that.
Okay, so that's, that's the one that we're going to be specifically referring to uh in, in our questioning back and forth with you this afternoon. Um now, uh what we propose to do, there's representatives here this afternoon uh on the committee or committee is made up of representatives from the opposition, uh the crossbench and the government. And what we like to do, if you're agreeable, is, is move between the three groups uh to ask questions of you and provide you with an opportunity to answer those questions. So um I also understand that there's been some uh discussion between yourself and the committee secretary over the matters of the nature of confidentiality over certain matters that have been covered off. Uh now, you're, you're comfortable, you understand what, what's been explained to you in regards to that?
Yes, I do.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, we'll get proceedings underway and we'll commence with the Deputy Chair.
Thank you. Uh thank you, Ms Craig. Thank you for coming to give evidence today.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry. I should have invited you, sorry.
Oh, no, stay.
An opening statement. I do apologise. Sorry, I rushed right into it without thinking. Uh invite you to make an opening statement if you wish.
Yes, I would. Thank you.
I apologise.
Uh my name, yeah, my name is Lisa Craig. I've been directly involved in animal research since nineteen ninety-two. I've worked extensively in the US and Australia in academia, industry and government. I'm a strong believer in the value and the benefit of animal research in medical and veterinary medicine and that we're not yet in a place that animal models can be replaced in all instances. However, it's of utmost importance that when animals are used in research, it is done with the utmost care and respect for the animals and their welfare. Beyond the three Rs, this includes the importance of expertise in laboratory animal science, the science dedicated to the humane care of use of animals in research. Lab animal science and medicine includes veterinarians, paraprofessionals and other professionals with expertise not just in animal care but in managing the biologic variability inherent in animal models that is critical to the quality of reliable and repeatable research. Unfortunately, professionalism in, in lab animal science in Australia is lacking. This includes access to lab animal science and medicine education. Australian regulations leave the authority and responsibility for animal care and welfare with the chief investigator. Veterinarians, paraprofessionals and professional lab animal science involvement in research is not prioritised and research is over-reliant on researchers who lack expertise in animal care and welfare, including the principles of lab animal science and medicine. Even the animal research review panel does not include expertise in lab animal science and medicine nor representatives from those of us directly involved in the daily care and animal, in management of animals in research. I wanted direct here attention to the agreement survey on the replacement, reduction or refinement of the use of animals for scientific purposes in Australia. This survey was commissioned by the NHMRC and the survey involved investigators, animal ethics committee members and institutional representatives that were responsible for governance. Not one animal officer, animal welfare officer or staff member directly responsible for the care of research animals was involved in this survey. The survey demonstrated not only the lack of importance and authority assigned to those people with experience and expertise in animal care and management, but highlights the over-reliance of self-government and management and the AEC and researcher over-reliance on each other and the granting authorities in determining the appropriateness of research, the ethical implementation of research and the application of the three Rs. There's a significant deficiency in the management and care of animals in research management and control of variability in animal research in Australia. And this includes the implementation of the three Rs and the development of experimental protocols and procedures. This gap must be filled in order to ensure animal care and welfare, animal care. Animal care and welfare authority must be in the hands of those with appropriate training and education and experience and are able to imply, to provide proper rigorous management and monitoring of biologic variability, including genetics and microbiome. And these issues are critical in, to ensuring the repeatability of the quality of research in Australia and as well as animal research. Thank you for talking to me today. I'm happy to answer any questions about my submissions.
Thank you very much. Deputy Chair.
Thank you. Uh and again, thank you for coming. Uh your, your submission raises some, some really extreme cases of animal welfare. You talk about animals having their toes and their tails cut off, animals not being given proper analgesia, animals being killed en masse because the data wasn't correct. Um is this something that you've witnessed across a variety of facilities that you've worked at?
There is definitely a range of, um, a range of facilities. Some, some institutions are much more um inclined to do the right thing. Other institutions are quite, are quite questionable at times. There, there is a wide range of ethics committee processes and procedures. And again, without, without, without proper authority in the hands of animal care staff, it's very difficult to manage.
And, and were there particular animal protocols that, that were most concerning? You used the word horrific when you're talking about smoke inhalation studies. Um for the benefit of the committee, can you describe what you saw to, to use that word horrific?
So the, the forced inhalation study is something that is of common concern. Um and I have extensive experience with those models. Um animals are, are forced to have, have post-exposure to cigarette smoke five days a week. Um they are left two days a week in withdrawal. The particular model leaves animals, yeah, hyperthermic, wet and in significant, um, significant distress between cigarettes. Um and generally those animals are smoked twice a day. Um these, these models are, consist, are, are horribly unreliable. Um and in many instances, I've seen those animals culled in mass when the researcher has decided that the progress of the animal's weight, the progress of the study isn't going the way they expected or intended.
And, and do you know where, where these experiments, what facilities are conducting these sorts of experiments?
I, I dabbed off hand at the moment, no.
Um and in regards to the, the complaints that you made about animals having body parts cut off and, and analgesia, um were there any investigations that took place in regards to the, these concerns?
Uh look, tail clipping and tail clipping and taking tissues is, is very common practice done in, um, in embryonic stages or, or young stage or within the first two weeks of life. It's very common and done under anaesthetic with, and considered generally humane. However, in these instances, the animals were adults, subject to the two procedures that they were not approved for. Um there was, there was a suggestion that there was an investigation, but again, it was not, there was no follow-through from that investigation.
Um and in regards to the overproduction and killing of excess animals bred for research, um how big of a problem was that, um where you worked? Um what happened? If you had to have a guesstimate of, of how many animals were being killed? You know, what are we looking at?
Yeah, I, I know we've, we've heard a lot about, everybody's heard a lot about AVR today and, and AVR is an excellent institution. But a number of institutions are still ordering animals from AVR and then proceeding to breed them on their site. So they're ordering commercially available animal, breeding them on site for two or three generations. And it, and in general, with mice and rats, you end up with an excess prediction of just fifty, fifty or sixty percent at times. Sometimes less, depending on, on the needs, but it's, it's been um-
Can you give us a bit of an idea about what that means in numbers? Like, I mean, are, are we talking about twenty animals being killed or are we talking about potentially hundreds of thousands? Sorry?
We're talking in the thousands at, at some institutions. They, most institutions have moved away from that practice. But again, there are institutions within New South Wales that are engaged in breeding their own commercially available strains. They might get the original animals from AVR and, and breed them through two or three generations and then replace them again to the animals from AVR and replace them. So we're, we're talking of thousands of animals. Um you know, in addition to our things that, such as um guinea pig colonies and things that are generally not commercially or readily available. And in those instances, we're talking, you know, hundreds of animals can be wasted per year.
And, and are they killed with, with surgical dislocation? And is the animal care staff given that as a responsibility?
Uh the animal care staff is generally left without responsibility. In the case of guinea pigs, there, there was, there was a, an attempt at rehoming. So there was some significant rehoming or at least giving them to pet stores in the past. Um I do believe those practices have stopped and those animals are now being held cold.
Um and, and in regards to some of the welfare issues that you've seen, what are some of the worst things that you've, you've witnessed in your time at, at different facilities in Australia?
Uh in terms of absolute welfare issues, there are, there are many issues around care and management of animals that are not sufficient. Um it, it's some institutions, again, not all institutions. Um and it goes back to facility support. It goes back to facility support and training from the institution. Animal care programmes are generally low, the, the last priority on the budget.
And, and when you say it's, it's the animal care, I mean, could, just because we, we, we don't know what that involves because we're not working that space. So just give me an idea of sort of what are the welfare implications?
And engaged in institutions where previous staff have been neglectful in managing care of animals or improperly trained or, or lacked knowledge around the appropriate care of those species. That has resulted in things such as, um, you know, bumblefoot and guinea pigs or, or mouldy water bottles. There, there's definitely been a range of those things. I mean, I suppose in terms of ultimate, the most horrific welfare issues I've seen would come back to the smoke, to those forced inhalation and smoking models.
And just one, one quick clarification. How many facilities have you worked at in Australia?
Oh. I've worked with at least four and I'm also, I, as an ALAC ad hoc um member, I've, I've been engaged in some others.
Thank you.
So ju- ju- just for the purposes of hand side, uh that acronym, the organisation, could you just?
Uh sorry, uh it's American Assessment of Accreditation for Laboratory Animal-
Okay. No, that's okay. So-
It's, it's a compulsory international accreditation institute.
No, thank, thank you. We just wouldn't know the acronym on, for hand side purposes. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Um good afternoon, Ms Craig, and thank you very much for, um, for your very, very useful submission. So can I just understand then, so you say that you've worked uh in around four um facilities in Australia? Is that in New South Wales or in Australia more broadly?
Well, in Queensland and Queensland.
Uh and you previously worked in the US?
I previously worked in the US, yes.
How many facilities did you work in in the US?
Uh I was the, I was the Director of Animal Research at, at the Sydney Centre Centre in, at John Pupplum's university. I worked with several institutions at NIH and was the Training Compliance Manager for a contracting company that covered up seventeen of the NIH programmes. Um I worked for, for Big Pharma. I've worked for the university, at the university. Uh did my graduate work as well with animals and animal models.
So you've got a pretty good insight then, you'd say, into the difference um between um the average US facility and the average facility here in New South Wales?
Not just the difference, but also the, um, the evolution of animal management and animal programs throughout the years.
Um and is it your evidence then that the, the situation in the, in New South Wales, far from sort of setting the world standard, is actually um the standard of animal welfare in our medical research facilities is actually poorer than in the US?
At least in the, in some of the facilities that I've been in. There is quite a, a, a much more extensive diversity and range in animal programme, in animal care in Australia versus that that I've, that I've encountered in the US. Um I have encountered things in Australia that I, that I have been quite shocked by, I suppose.
Um one of the things that we, I guess, explore a lot on these um animal welfare related inquiries is the concept of having a, um, an independent office or an independent person who ensures that animal welfare is, is being met. Um and I guess, you know, independent from um the interests of the people who are using the animals in the first place. So whether that's, you know, agriculture or, um, or a, anything else, I guess. Um in your submission, you talk about there being a lack of independent oversight when it comes to welfare um in our facilities in Australia. How is that different in the US?
Uh in the US for one, the US regulations require that a veterinarian, that a very, that a program of veterinary care adequate veterinary care is in place at all institutions. And ultimately, the veterinarian has the ultimate authority for animal welfare and, and responsibility. The veterinarians are much more engaged and involved in the development of the procedures and protocols around animal use. Um veterinarians are much more involved in a, in the Ethics or Animal Care and Use Review project, programs. Um there is extensive staffing and, and expertise in lab animal science and medicine. So, so animal facility managers may have a master's degree in laboratory animal science. Those, those programs are just simply not available in Australia. Those, those programs are just simply not available in Australia. Um, veterinarians in, in the US may have much more extensive training and education and experience in lab animal science than our average animal welfare.
And so the, um, so in New South Wales, it's the, sort of the primary researcher then who has responsibility for ensuring animal welfare outcomes, is that right?
That, that is correct, and animal care and management processes. So I have, and one of my struggles as an animal facility manager is that I do not have authority to determine how animals are managed. Um, but it, the researchers, and it requires the researcher approval to determine how, like, the care, the care and management of the animals. If, if, say a cage should be changed every two weeks, the animal researcher says, no, it should be changed once a week, then I have to, then I have to allow that researcher's requirements.
So are you able to give us an example then of when that conflict, I guess, between what a researcher is trying to do with their research and, um, on one hand, and the, and animal welfare, um, ideal and the, and the other? Or, you know, what they should be doing from an animal welfare perspective coming to conflict?
So, uh, for one example, it is sanitation quality control practices within the facilities and allowing the, the proper use of sanitation agents and disinfection within facilities. Microbiome has become a huge issue. And there's a, there's this huge idea that if we use disinfectants in the environment, the animal's gonna, the microbe, it's gonna change the environment, it's gonna change the animal's microbiome, and it's gonna impact the research. But however, it's absolutely impossible. We need to have those sanitation programs in order to, to reduce pathogens and ensure the health and welfare of those animals. Um, other examples come back to, um, feed and water quality, bedding changes. You know, animal care, you know, changes in, in cage numbers. Um, mice don't like their cages changed. Uh, they're, they're very olfactory and scent driven, they're scent markers. So it's really best to delay those cage changes as much as possible. But a researcher looks at it and says, oh, they're dirty. Oh, they're eating their feces. Well, yes, that's part of being a mouse. Yeah, so there's a lot of conflict in what a researcher believes is the appropriate care and management, but what actual science says is the appropriate care and management of an animal in research. It, you know, it's, it's not a pet. You can't change the food and water as, as you see fit, you know. That does have significant impacts on the variability of the experiment and the, the ultimate outcomes.
Thank you.
Governor? Chris, Chris can start?
Yeah. Great. Um, thank you for your, um, evidence, uh, so far. And I think, um, a lot of people would be quite surprised or, um, confronted by some of what you've said. Um, do you know, is it an issue of, um, current regulations or laws not being enforced? Or is it new regulations or laws and protections that need to be put in place? Or a combination of, of the two?
I think it, I think it comes down to absolute inadequate regulations. Um, first of all, you know, institutions are self-believing. There's no incentive for an institution to police itself. There's no, there's no mechanism for animal care staff or other staff to make complaints against a researcher, against a practice that they've seen. Um, there's a lack of training in all of our animal ethics committee, you know. And there's also a, there's also a good deal of fear. It's like, well, if I, if I block that protocol and suspend that researcher, well, then we've lost funds. You know, and it's a risk to the institution. So there's a lot, there's a lot the legislation lacks in terms of, um, those policies and procedures that take away or, or incentivize researchers to manage the programs appropriately.
Um, and then, uh, when your opening statement, you said that it, um, obviously we can't, um, ban, uh, animal testing overnight. Um, what sort of, and I think sort of where we're, from what everything that, that this inquiry's heard today is that, um, we're in a situation where pretty much everyone agrees that eventually, hopefully, we'll be in a position where we won't have to, um, test on animals. But at the moment, it seems like it's not feasible to, you know, to immediately ban it overnight. What sort of timeframe do you think, or how far along is the, uh, is, is the science? How, how, what sort of horizon would you, would you say we could do that in? No, no, it's probably a difficult question because it's a bit, how long's a piece of string?
That's a very important question.
Yeah.
The, the science has been so, um, you know, has, has taken leaps and bounds and there's so much change every day that, you know, we could find in ten years, we've eliminated it. We might come up with something tomorrow that, you know, is really, you know, that's asking for twenty, twenty twenty hindsight and that I just don't have. Um, I think there's significant investment overseas in those alternatives, but there, you know, that's one of the problems in Australia is that we are not investing in alternatives at all. There are no, you know, I think the universe, well, let's talk to the University of New South Wales doesn't know, has a program, um, offers a grant in alternative methodology, methodologies, but there's no support for it through the NHMRC or any other mechanism in Australia.
But do you think with our scientists and researchers that they would probably view it more as a necessary evil rather than something that they particularly enjoy doing? Or it's not like they, they want it to continue in perpetuity because of some ideological principle that they have? It's more just that they see the medical benefits that it provides and they think that, um, you know, phasing it out too quickly could potentially harm their, uh, you know, their research?
Uh, quite frankly, I have yet to meet a reason for who likes to come down to the animal house. So I think that they would all prefer to move away from animals if they found that feasible. You know, they, they may lack the resources and the funding to do that at the moment, but I don't know, I have yet to come across with a researcher who thinks that, that we should just continue to stay without...
Yeah, questions? Chair, happy far?
Pleasure. Thank you. Uh, thank you for appearing today and, um, offering to provide some evidence to the inquiry. Uh, the first place I wanted to start was, um, around, uh, some of the evidence that, uh, my colleagues have already taken you to today about, um, what you've, I guess, witnessed, viewed, um, inside, um, some of the facilities. What actions did you take when, um, when you became aware of, uh, some of the issues that you've, um, addressed in your submission, uh, two five one?
Um, I've submitted the adverse events in contact with animal welfare officers and actually, in one case, I actually resigned from the role in...
And what, um, what was the outcome of those, um, circumstances?
Uh, no change. Uh, in fact, in, in fact, I would say negative change. Uh, the institution that I, I resigned from is actually now being run from Adelaide by a, you know, the program oversight isn't even on, on the campus. Um, they no longer have any expertise at all.
So the, the evidence that you provided was not substantiated or was not upheld, is that...
Uh, no, I was, I was actually asked to do a program review for the institution, um, which I did complete. I gave it to the DVCR and he then resigned and that went nowhere.
Sorry, just for hindsight again, the, the acronym?
DVCR.
Uh, I'm sorry, the, um, DVCR, um, the Deputy Vice-Chancellor for Research and Innovation.
Thank you, thank you, okay. So, um, the, the review that you did, um, did it, um, it, it had, um, examples of these, um, uh, and I won't go through them, um, the, the issues that, um, that you identified. Um, and that led to the, the resignation of that, that person? Yet you, you still say that it had a negative impact, is that...
Uh, the, the review, there was no, there was no, yes, there was no, um, change instituted based on that program review.
Okay.
Um, the, it was summarily dismissed.
Okay, so... Oh, sorry, go, go on, sorry. There's, there's a delay in the, in the WEX, which is the, which always creates a problem.
It was summarily dismissed and that program was never, never changed. In fact, six months later, I was still getting urgent phone calls for issues to deal with us, the, 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 um, program.
So, so in that instance, then, were you, um, in, I guess, possession of or, um, able to access documents, photos, uh, documentary evidence that you could then take to other organizations such as, um, uh, say the, um, Animal Defenders Office or the RSPCA, that the two organizations we heard from are just prior to you?
I have not submitted them to those, to those organizations. However, that did cause that, that is part of the reason that I'm here today and that I did bring that to the Animal Justice Party and did have discussions with the Animal Justice Party around my recommendations for changes in legislation and...
So, sorry, can I, just, just before we go any further, sorry. Have you, you, you're saying that you actually took your evidence beforehand and you've, before the, before this parliamentary inquiry, you've actually contacted members of this inquiry with evidence and...
No, not with the evidence per se, but this is, but this is what forced me, this is what brought me to, um, become more involved with the legislative changes, with the Animal Justice Party, with...
So are you a member of the Animal Justice Party?
No, I'm not.
Have you, have you been contacted or have you spoken to any of the members on this inquiry about this, about this inquiry prior to giving evidence today?
I, I spoke to one member about two years ago about the issues I was having, not about my submission today.
Okay, so the evidence, so, so the issues that you identified, that you then, um, were just, were not upheld, um, you've, you've brought to the Animal Justice Party, you've given that evidence to them. You've then come to this inquiry?
Sorry, point of order, she said that she has not given the Animal Justice Party evidence. Her, what she has said is very clear.
Yeah, so at the time, I was trying to find a way, because what, what I have noticed, what I have found in Australia is there is no report, there is no national oversight, there is no state oversight. So when I, so when I wanted to bring that to a legislator or to, um, the AARP, for instance, there was no mechanism for me to take it outside of the institution and have an investigation completed because there is oversight.
I've noted that you've ordered, I'm sorry.
I contacted the Animal Justice Party for information on what to do and where to go next and how to become more involved.
Because I noted that you feature in a, uh, a printed, oh, sorry, an online version, I suspect, of, um, uh, in a, in a, in a newspaper article, um, was published and online a number of, um, probably about an hour or so ago, um, featuring, um, some of those claims. Yet you haven't actually taken them to, uh, somewhere like, um, the Animal Defenders Office, RSPCA or the like. It's, um, why haven't you done that, those things? Why have you only used it now in this inquiry?
Yeah, because I, I, I have talked to the reporters about them. I mean, again, it's very difficult in terms of, um, of reputational risk. I mean, obviously, there's a lot of reputational risk involved.
There's a lot of reputational risk, I suspect, taking it to a newspaper for an inquiry and actually having not dealt with it through the proper processes.
The, I was contacted by the newspaper because I had been the previous manager at an institution that had run those studies.
Okay, you can understand, you can understand the issue that I've got here in that, um, you've, you've raised a number of, um, uh, issues, um, both ethical and, um, uh, animal treatment issues. Um, you've, they've been dismissed when they've been investigated and...
They were not investigated and that's the problem. There was no investigation.
Uh, well, they haven't been upheld, let me hold it, let me put it that way. In- instead of actually raising it with, um, animal welfare, um, uh, organizations or the like, you've, um, you've put it here where it comes under parliamentary privilege. Um, uh, you can understand my concern here that it's, that they haven't been addressed properly.
And I can address that because I don't, because the, because taking it to animal defenders or taking it to the RSPCA is not an effective means to manage the situation.
To an degree, more than pretty ineffective organizations.
Well, they absolutely don't have the authority to overturn, to, to investigate the institution unless the institution allows them. And if, have they done that, I mean, if we were in the United States...
But neither do we, neither do we. I just, that's...
No, that's, but the legislation needs to change, so that, that's where the legislation needs to change. In the US, there's legislation that requires that, that allows people to go to the animal welfare officer or to an institute, organizations that then have the authority to manage that. And Australia, that's lacking. And Australia, that's the institution itself.
Can, can, so, so we'll move, move, sorry, didn't mean to catch you. We've got to move questioning, I've got a few questions, if that's okay, just to take us through to the end of your session. Uh, so, so, um, uh, in terms of the matter of, of, uh, care and management of animals that are, are being used for animal experimentation, I think you said in your opening statement, um, that, um, that you have concerns about what you've observed about what the levels of care and management are. Uh, I, I presume that's based on your experience working in those four facilities in Australia, is that...
That's correct.
Yeah. Um, so could you elucidate on, on, on what your observations are? There's of course the concern about the care and management.
Yeah, so my, my concern are not about the actual care and management, but where the care and management authority sits. And the care and management authority and the, and the authority for animal welfare currently sits with the, with the Chief Investigator of Research Project. That investigator has no expertise in animal care, animal management or husbandry. There's no independence, there's no veterinary involvement, there's no paraprofessional involvement. So the expertise in care and management of animals is missing in those situations. And as I alluded to earlier, oftentimes where there is expertise, they, the animal care staff or the animal care management, it's not, um, deemed necessary. Uh, and that person does not have the authority to ensure animal care and welfare decisions are made appropriately.
Um, I'm trying to just, in my mind, be clear with this, that I understand from a structural point of view, you've said that there aren't certain people in place that have certain responsibilities with respect to, uh, animal care and, uh, management. Um, but what is the level of animal care and management like in our institutions that undertake animal research? And from your experience across the four organizations you've worked for?
It, it's quite underfunded and undersubvented. Uh, we lack the resources and often, we're often understaffed. Um, it's difficult to find staffing and, and staff with training and qualification. Um, the TIC, the TIC program in New South Wales as well. So where do you get animal care staff that have any training in animal care and man, in animal care? So we're bringing them in and we're training them on the ground and, and it's difficult.
I'm, I'm still not quite clear in my mind. I'm trying to, and I'm not, not sort of looking to argue with you, but I, I understand the point you make about specific positions not being in place uh, for the oversighting of, uh, uh, animal care and management. But just as, as a general statement, what is the level of care or animal care and management in our institutions? Just so I can grasp that.
It's quite basic, I mean, it's quite basic. Animals are getting appropriate care, but not necessarily getting appropriate control of intrinsic variability. So there's a lot of variation of facility, variability in facilities. So one facility might use an acidified water system, one might use a fluorinated water system. Um, there is a lot of variability in this stuff, what the staff does. So some institutions, they, they don't allow students post-docs and graduates to perform animal experimentations and they have, they have technical staff with that expertise that is doing it day and, and day out and has the training and expertise in injections or surgery or manipulations. And they're replacing the researchers, that, you know, the students and the free labor that researchers use. But that's not often the case because it's expensive. Yeah, there, there's, there's a difference between hiring somebody with technical expertise to perform your animal experiments and getting a, a postgraduate student or a, an honor student to do free labor.
Can I just, um, move over to the, uh, sort of observations about the United States? Because obviously you've described your experience there, uh, in the United States. Um, is it your evidence that the way in which animal experimentation is dealt with in the United States is at a, at a discernibly different and, and higher level of quality and standard in Australia?
Yes, absolutely.
And what...
And much less variability between institutions.
And, and, and why is that so in your observation?
Much more prescriptive legislation as well as the involvement of veterinarians. The United States requires veterinary involvement in research. The Australian legislation does not. Even the A C member is not required to be a, a registered veterinarian, only able to be registered.
So the, the role of the veterinarian, uh, in Australia, is that essentially limited to uh, membership of, of an Oversight Ethics Committee? Is that your understanding?
The, the category D member, the veterinarian in Australia is, their only delegated role is as a member of the Ethics Committee. But that veterinary member does not have to have any experience, does not have to have ever practiced, only must... only must have a qualification that allows them to be registered in Australia.
Okay. You, in your evidence, spoke about the need to incentivise matters to bring about change. I used the word incentivise, it was the word that you used. What do you have in mind when it comes to incentivising matters to bring about change? Do you have any particular example?
It all comes to the legislation, legislation driving change and that paradigm shift. But it also comes down to ensuring that there are available funds that people can use to develop new methodologies and techniques, to be engaged in refinement activities, to research, you know, causes of variabilities in animal studies. If somebody's, you know, as I said earlier, one of the studies I saw, a number of animals killed because they weren't providing the results that the researcher expected. Well, that researcher should be able to use the funds that they have to investigate the reason for that change in their results, not just to start all of that. But there's no incentive there, because if they're not producing the research that they stated they're going to produce, the institution isn't inclined to keep them upward, or they'll lose funding.
Sorry, just explain it again, that if they don't produce particular outcomes, so I might misheard you, that they need to?
They need to investigate why. You know, one of the studies, the animals were not, the postdoc did not believe that the animals were gaining weight the way they should have. So rather than investigating what was causing changes in weight gain, they just swapped the project altogether and started again, rather than investigating the causes for those changes. You know, they're putting money into pathology, putting money into pathology, putting money into, looking at genetic cost changes, looking at microbiome differences between groups, that funding's just not available for those investigations.
So can I ask you, what would your submission in terms of where the funding's going to come from? Sorry, and that's not a trick question, it's just a straight-up question.
I think that when NHMRC funds grants that involve animal research, they need to have sufficient funding for the animal care, the animal research, and the assurance of minimisation of variability. So the NHMRC grant should come with requirement that the researcher does some genetic monitoring of their animals, does microbial monitoring of their animals, to ensure that their results are consistent, and that they can then explain any, investigate any inconsistencies. It's rigorous science, and it's expensive.
Well, that's time, so we thank you very much, myself as the Chair on behalf of the committee. We appreciate you making the time available today. Your submission contribution was very helpful, and the opportunity to question today has also added to our knowledge as well. So on behalf of the committee, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so that brings to a conclusion then for the hearing today, the public component. We do have some further evidence we're receiving shortly, but that will be received in camera, and that's been organised. So on behalf of the committee, thank you for joining us today, and we look forward to seeing you again at our next hearing coming up in June. Thank you very much.